We're ready for the prayer.
You ready? Good morning. Heavenly Father, we come together today to bring you into this beautiful birthday season, and to say thank you for another great year. Cameron County has truly come alive with your blessings, and we here are all better off and looking forward to continuing our growth and prosperity in Cameron County in 2007. We pray for all our people and families to share love and good health this season, relationships even to get better during this season, and give quality time to family. Get togethers, and finally, thanks to you, Lord Jesus, for so many answered prayers coming out of these chambers during the past 12 years. In Jesus' name, amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let me go ahead and take up the workshop presentation by the Cameron County Child Welfare Board, and then what we're gonna do is go into executive session, pick up some items, we'll take up all the executive session items, and then come back out and take the regular agenda. So, Madam Chairperson?
Good morning.
May I ask that all the individuals that are with you to stand so we know the group you're with?
I'd like everyone from Child Protective Services and the Cameron County Child Welfare Board to please stand up, and everyone who supports our organization. Thank you.
That would be awesome.
Thank you, everybody. And we need more people to be standing with us.
Great.
Honorable Judges Nohosa, County Commissioners, my name is Melba Motemarod Hausman, and I am the President of the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. I have been involved with this organization now approximately seven years. On behalf of the Board, I am reaching out to the Cameron County Commissioners Court for assistance, helping families. The Cameron County Child Welfare Board serves as a liaison between the County Commissioners Court and Child Protective Services. The mission of Child Protective Services is to protect the unprotected children from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. We, the Board, are the voice for the children of Cameron County that cannot speak for themselves. We develop policies to meet the needs of the children of Cameron County. Our Board supports Child Protective Services in assisting children and families with clothing, school supplies, transportation, food, school expenses, school trips, birth certificates, passports, and medications. Additionally, our Board provides assistance for children who are medically needing. We help with expenses to the family, including transportation to and from doctor's appointments and medications. We also help with funeral arrangements for children who have died as a result of neglect and abuse, and for children who go through this in foster care also. Furthermore, throughout the year, we organize yearly events for children and families in foster care and families currently being assisted by Children Child Protective Services. These events include a Christmas party that we just had, we just had our biggest one on Saturday, it was a great success, and a skating party in July, a zoo trip in March, and a back-to-school party in August, where the children are provided with backpacks with school supplies. We also do a banquet for the foster parents in recognition for their hard work, and we also have another banquet for volunteers for their time and their donations to help our children and our families. We have been performing all of these functions with the resources we get by making fundraisers from cake sales, sales of magnets, which you will always getting one at the end of this meeting, and I hope that you proudly put it on your vehicle, and also from the magnets and the bracelets, supporting our cause and requesting donations from businesses around our community. We did volunteer work for the South Padre Island Bike Fest Association, and they donated $1,300 to our organization this year. We also approached Amphels at the Port of Brownsville to consider us for their annual golf fundraiser. In return, they donated an extremely generous $10,000 to our fund, along with some toys from their Christmas party that they were kind enough to divide amongst the Brownsville Police Department, the Fire Department, and our organization. We have been doing our best with limited funds and limited support. We have been having some trouble getting the community to help us because we are the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. People assume that we are paid county employees and we are county-funded. To clear that up, let me just state that we are volunteers, all of us, and we belong to the Children's Welfare Board for Cameron County, a nonprofit organization that depends on community involvement, support, and donations. We, in past years, were very fortunate to have a Board that kept us going. Unfortunately, community desire to be a member of the Board has decreased substantially. Due to lack of volunteers, we are falling on hard times. As the population of our county grows, so do the situations and the amount of children that are being affected. We believe in what our organization is doing, and we are working our hardest to continue to serve the children and families of our county, but we need your funding so that we can better serve the children. We hope you find it in your heart to help us help the children of Cameron County. In conclusion, I need your help, I need your help, to continue to operate in a constant orderly manner without worrying about the day-to-day operation. We will continue requesting the community, both personal and business, for their help in our special events and other functions. In consideration, we would also like to request that the old County Commissioners Court, where the children's cases are being held, be made more child-friendly and have a little more security. Also, that a waiting room for the children be added. We are not requesting a lot of space in that area. All we want is a room for these children to wait for their turn in court. And I'm sure, I'm sure you all have witnessed it, when the children are all waiting in the lobby, it's a loud, noisy chaos. I mean, children and parents are both waiting in that lobby, children who have been separated from their families, and it's not, it's not a pretty sight.
Sad, it's actually sad.
It's very sad. And so, all I requested there, there be a room where the children can wait to be put when it's their turn to go into the courtroom. We want to do everything for our kids, they deserve our love and undevoted attention. I invite you to come at your leisure and take a tour of our facilities at 1,000 West Price, and come see it for yourself. Judge, Commissioners, just to close this off, it hurts me to say, but the truth of the matter is, all our efforts are not enough, and our county and our community have forgotten the children, we've forgotten about the kids that are the most important part of our community. And I thank you, and I hope you take everything I said into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We, we voted some time ago to make the Cameron County Welfare Board an agency of Cameron County that would be funded by Cameron County, and we've been putting together a proposal on how to do that. I'd hope to bring that back to the Commissioners Court next, in our last meeting next week, and, and adopt a formal structure for the agency as part of Cameron County government. And so, I think we hear you. I've, I've got a preliminary design that I will also present to the Commissioners Court on, on next week, on a child-friendly courtroom that my brother put together, that's got two courtrooms, one courtroom for child welfare, and then an area for the children to be at and to be, and to be reunified with their parents and, and caseworkers and interviews to occur separate and apart from where the courtroom's at and the hallway. I think that we all recognize that we haven't done enough. I think we all recognize that these children are facing the most difficult circumstance that a human being can face at a point in their life where they're very much affected, and that if we're not out there advocating for them, no one is, and that it's, it is almost, it is not, it almost, it is, I think, a commitment that we have to make to our God to ensure that, that we do whatever we can to lessen the burden on these children in whatever resources we can contribute towards dealing with the difficult situation that they're dealing with. So, I have heard you, and I hope that the Commissioners will continue to support what, what we're advocating with respect to Child Welfare Board. We also have an agenda item today on a possible lease agreement with the CASA program so that we can have them located at the courthouse, and I'm hoping that we can also make some room there for the Child Welfare Board, at least have, have an office in the area so that y'all have a presence at the courthouse that reflects the importance of what you do for our children. So, thank you for your service. I know that you've made a commitment to our children in a very big way, and you do it completely on a volunteer basis, and I hope that, that you continue to serve and all those people that are here that are serving as well, that, that give of themselves with all their heart, and, and know that it's never gonna be enough, but at least we're giving it a shot and giving, trying our best. So, thank you very much, okay?
Thank you.
I had Commissioner, I'm sorry, Judge Miguel Lopez sign up to say a few words on the workshop, and I would ask her to come up and also join us.
Thank you so much. Right now, a while back, Judge Udeste was on the reallocation committee as far as where space was going to be, how space was going to be utilized once administrative building, which is yourselves and the other people moved out of that building. And during that time, we had asked for more space, the judges, because we need two new courts, you know, we need a court for family law and we need a court for CPS. And so, we're planning on locating it there. A while back, we had talked about at the Cada Salis having two courts, criminal court, maybe a district court and a county court to take care of the prisoners, because we do not have space. We are crowded, we do not have any place for expansion, and so, we were told at that time, and in fact, I lost some space for my court reporter because I gave some space up to Aurora de Lagarta because I was told that I was going to have space on the fourth floor for also my court reporter. So, all of a sudden, then, you know, I see on the agenda these items, and I love CASA, and I love the Child Welfare Board, and I always support them. I always support them when I, when they sell tickets, when they have galas and all that, and I'm all for, you know, your organization and what you stand for, but right now, we need that space, okay? And we've been talking, in fact, I've been talking to the DA's office about, you know, security is one of our problems, of maybe even them taking the fourth floor and we taking over their floor, which is on the second floor of the judicial building. So, we're right now, in fact, I talked to Armando last night, he was in Florida, and I told Armando, I said, "Armando, we need to talk about this," you know? Right now, Armando was approaching us, the judges, and asking, "Listen, I wanna be repairing the second floor and the third floor, so can I use your fourth floor?" You know, until, you know, we can repair all that. And I told him, "Well, let's sit down and talk." We had made a committee of three judges, myself, Judge Layad, Judge Leonel Alejandro, to talk about the space allocation over there. Remy had come to talk to us about, I would think, two weeks ago, and we told him that we couldn't afford to give up our space. We couldn't afford to not plan it and not have the courtrooms the way we want it. He had mentioned, "Well, the Commissioners Court, we could divide it in two." That just doesn't work, you know? Those courts, because they have so many children and so many people, need bigger courtrooms. You cannot have like a little county court at law court, we have to have them bigger. So, we talked about that, and we told him that we were not in favor of this. We told him there when we had the Board of Judges meetings, all the county court at law judges, all the district judges. And so, what I want is for us to sit down, in fact, I told Commissioner Benavides, I'd like her to be on the committee. Three judges will have her on the committee, I thought we could have somebody from the engineering department, Hondo, to come over and be on the committee and help us try to see how is the best way that we can use up our space for the needs that we have right now before us. And so, that's how come, you know, I, I feel bad because I've always been on your side, you know, I've always been with you guys, but on this one, you know, I have to look out for what's in the best interest of our courts over there. And our children, we are, CPS is looking out for your children, you know? And we have a judge that comes, Family Court is looking out for the children. So, we are doing that, we're not, we're not ignoring that. Please, don't think we are ignoring that, we are.
But Judge, I mean, I mean, we have a significant problem on that floor. I mean, if, I don't know if you've ever been there when they're hearing child welfare cases, I mean, there's kids out in the hallway, not two, three, 15, 20 kids, parents, caseworkers, foster care workers, they're playing in the ground, they're, they're, they're all over the place, and there is, there is nowhere for these children to go if you don't set something up. Otherwise, you've got them out, out there in the most difficult circumstances you can possibly have. You know, I'm confused as to what the judges are saying on here because, you know, we had several conversations with Judge Udeste and the judges with respect to what was gonna happen with the DA's office, and the judges have continuously said that they will not take, and even exchange with the district attorney's office because the space from the, from the DA's office was not enough to give them what they needed. It's barely enough for one courtroom, much less two. What I was told was that there was talk yesterday of eliminating the JP space and giving that to the district courts, but no one has ever said, "Well, what are we gonna do with the two JPs that are out there?" I mean, you know, the, the difficulty that we have is that, and I, you know, I guess this is gonna be faced by, by someone else, but not me, but the difficulty that we've got is that you, if you, if you do an exchange with the DA's office, then all you really can have is the DA's space. And if the DA's, if you're talking about a lack of space, that's significantly less space than what's on the other side, even if you take the two courtrooms on that side. So, what do you do with the JPs if you're talking about eliminating them? I mean, you've got several issues here, I mean, but, but the most important issue in my mind, I mean, we've made space, we've given land for what Monica's house or, and Monica and Maggie and Monica's house on county property at, at the Levi site, and, and we made a commitment, we made a long-term commitment to them, and those folks, they're doing valuable work for the courts, but that's a one-time thing. You, a child goes into Monica's house or Maggie's house, and they get seen by a caseworker, and they prepare them for the trial, and that's it. On the other hand, what they do with children and child welfare, it's an ongoing, these kids come to court on a periodic basis, all the time, to be seen by the judge, to be with presentations made by the, by the, by the casework, by the caseworkers and the, and attorneys, and CASA is out there all the time. CASA is there as an advocate with them all the time, they're not, they don't see them one time, they see these kids all the time. And, and I don't understand where the courts would have a problem, you know, the only thing we're talking about is a small space, the only, that space that was, that, that we were looking at was space that the district attorney, the district courts had talked about using it for purposes of, of, of putting their court reporters in there, and that was it, there was no other space, talk about that whatsoever. You know, you, we, I don't think, I think that the plan that we're gonna recommend for courts is gonna be enough to have two courtrooms, one family law courtroom and one child welfare courtroom, and then you need the space for the kids. I mean, there's, I mean, there, if the courts are gonna say, "No, you can't have our space," and if the courts recognize that this is a serious situation and it's a problem that needs to be resolved, then the courts maybe need to come to us and offer an alternative. Tell us what are we gonna do with these kids? Tell us what we're gonna do with them in the hallway? If, if you don't have an alternative to offer for that...
Well, the, what I'm saying is for us to form that committee, I told the Commissioner for her to be on it, for us to discuss all these issues. If we can fit you in, we'll try to, but first, we have to make sure that we have the courtroom space. That's the first thing that we need to discuss. And right now, we had talked to Armando about meeting after the New Year's to discuss all this, we had already made a planning committee with three of the judges, so we're working on it.
Well, can you, if you, let me ask you this, I think it's appropriate that if you're gonna do that, and I, I don't have a problem with putting together a committee to look at courtroom space and have members of the Commissioners Court, the DA's and the judges as a, as a committee of that, but have representatives from CASA and have representatives from Child Welfare Board in that committee because it directly affects them. And I think that if they're sitting at the table when these decisions are made, then, then they'll know exactly what analysis y'all have gone through and how you've come to the decisions, and they can give you their input on what their needs are because their needs are large, they've got big problems. If you've ever been up there, you've seen it, it is the saddest thing in the world to see, to see these children who are going through the most traumatic experience in their entire life, and they probably, most traumatic experience that they will go for the rest of their life, crawling in the hallway, you know, being reunited with parents, sobbing out there with caseworkers, with, you know, lawyers, with CASA advocates, you know, and then being hauled in and out of that courtroom, with, it's pandemonium, it really is ultimate pandemonium, and it simply is not right. The child welfare system in the state of Texas got indicted by a grand jury, you know, because it was neglecting our children.
Judge Arroff understands the needs of CASA and CPS and the Child Welfare Board probably better than the Commissioners Court does. We have our CPS attorneys, we also have members of our office that are members of the Child Welfare Board and CASA. And by all, and I don't mean to, I think we're confusing two things. I don't mean to say that, that we want to isolate them, we just want to come up with a, a long-term plan to accommodate them. The, the idea that our office...
David, and I recognize it, I don't, I don't have a problem with the recommendation that you're making to put a committee together, to put this, to come up with a plan on what to do with the court's needs and the DA's office needs. I'm fine with that.
Because the concern is...
Hold on, we made a recommendation on, on how to do it, apparently, there's a problem with that recommendation, fine, but include them in the, in the committee, make sure they're in the committee, listen to what their needs are, and please address those needs when you come back to the Commissioners Court with a recommendation, because we have to think about them. Yes, ma'am?
Well, wait a minute, let David speak because he hasn't finished speaking, would you?
Thank you. And, and I guess one of my, the confusion that I'm having right now, Judge, is that right now, since we're renovating the third floor, or we're beginning renovations on the third floor, and we're gonna start renovations on the second floor, I see a window of about six, six months to a year where there's gonna be construction going on where our office is gonna be displaced. And I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because at the last Commissioners Court, it was you, Judge, that suggested that we move into the PD&amp;M spot while they construct. And so, this isn't, I, by all means, I don't want to make this a permanent pitch or anything like that, this is just a place for our employees to sit while construction is going on, which is, which is however long that it requires.
But I thought...
And I think Roger came here last time, Roger Ortiz and Mr. Isagui came here last time because the spaces, we have about 16 or 17 employees that are scattered throughout the judicial and administrative complex that are not in our office, that are in spaces that have been promised to other departments, and so, they keep putting pressure on us to get out of their space.
But David, I thought we talked yesterday about that, and I thought we had, you had recommended that, that in, for the interim, instead of using the PD&amp;M space, if CASA was gonna move in there, that you would, you would, you would use the county judges' offices, the old county judges' offices, until the renovation on the courts came through. That's still got a ways to go because you gotta go on a step-by-step basis, so, I mean, I don't think that's a problem, whether you use the PD&amp;M offices or you use the old county judges' offices, there's space out there to be used in the interim until the construction is completed, and the timelines for, for constructing the courts can wait on one, completion of the renovation of the district attorney's office, and then, and then, once that's completed so that you can move there...
Exactly.
Then, then you can, you can go ahead and, and then start the construction of the courts. I don't think we have an issue with that. My concern is not that, my concern is whatever is done with respect to, to the reconfiguration of office space and courtroom space at the administration offices and the judicial office has to take into consideration the needs of the child welfare, of the children who are in child welfare, and there's a lot of issues there. There's not just the courtroom and the child-friendly environment that we need to create, but there's also a need to have those advocates that are working with these kids on a daily basis. Let me tell you something, what, there's a, there's a dispute going on right now between Judge Martinez and the child welfare judge on office space, on courtroom space. The child wel, child welfare judge is saying that he needs more time in that courtroom, and, and Judge Martinez says he needs to use it all five days of the week. So, so there's no question in my mind that, that you have to have a full-time child welfare courtroom there, there's no question in it, and I think everybody agrees with that, even you recommended that, Judge.
Well, there, also the problem that we have...
Hold on, I didn't interrupt you, okay?
Okay, I'll wait.
And so, so I think that the only issue here is gonna have to be, and, and since it's a full-time situation and you know that you're having courtroom almost all the time in that child welfare courtroom, then, then there's no question that CASA, because they're just like the lawyers, you know, they're there, they're advocating for these kids, they need a permanent presence in that, in that courthouse because they're having to walk out all the time and, and deal with these particular cases that are coming in. So, I just think, I don't have issue with what you said, David, what I have issue with ignoring their needs. I don't have any issue with setting up a planning committee because I think that's a good idea. We had a recommendation, if the judges are not in agreement with it, then, then come back and, and work with the Commissioners Court, come up with a plan on this, but make sure these folks are sitting at the table when that plan comes up. And if we all agree with that, then I think, I think we've got, I, I think we're headed in the right direction.
One of the concerns that we also have is security, and one of the concerns of the security is that we don't have security over in the administrative building, and we've been talking about that, and so, I think that's one of the reasons why they're reconsidering talking to the DA's office about taking that spot because of the security, you know? Family Court is a very volatile court because people's emotions are involved, children are being taken away, and if there's gonna be a shooting and there're gonna be accidents, that's exactly where it's going to be at. And so, that's why also we're, you know, trying to get a committee so that we can work on this and try to iron out all these problems that we have. It's a complex issue, it's not that simple, just say, "We're gonna have two courts and that's it." You know? We have to take a lot of things into...
Judge, Judge, you also touched on the idea, and we've talked about it a little bit, and there was, in years past, there was plans to build a couple courtrooms out of the Cada Salis-Rucker area, and I really think this is the time to be looking at that because we are engaging architects to do some expansion out there, and this would be the opportune time, and if we don't do it this time, we're probably gonna lose that opportunity as it was lost a few years back. I, we all realize that y'all don't have enough courtrooms, you don't have enough space, that would not only facilitate, as we've talked about, that would facilitate the movement of prisoners, make it much, much less expensive on the sheriff's department, make it much more convenient, more safe. You know, we're talking about safety and security.
Yes.
We, I think, Commissioners, we, we need to be looking at creating an issue that would provide for a couple courtrooms in this expansion of the jail facility that we're talking about now. And I think the sheriff would probably chime in on that and... And I think the sheriff would probably chime in on that and probably support that issue too. I know in the past, he's certainly been in favor of that. And I'm not speaking for you, Sheriff, but I, I think you have been in favor of it. I would like to see that.
By all means, Commissioner, this has been an issue that has been discussed since 1997, and that was the idea behind leaving the space between the sheriff's office and the Carrizales. So perhaps at one time, we would build a courtroom over there or, in essence, go ahead and turn over the sheriff's office building and build the new sheriff's offices. We have grown also in personnel and what have you. So, it's a proper time to do it. If the commission would take a look at it, now is the time to do it. We need to do it now because the time is of the essence, and we wait any, any longer, it's going to cost three times as much, and eventually, we're going to need it. Definitely, we have this space over there, and it's a great idea, and we should do it again. Certainly, we will save money in the long run. It's easier for us to transport the prisoners, and it'd be easier for everybody as far as we're concerned, Commissioner.
I think Commissioner Tamayo had to come.
Judge, I'd like for us to go ahead and, and name, go ahead and name the committee. I want to know who's going to be on that committee. I want to know who's going to be heading it. I want to know who's going to be coordinating it. And, and I'd like for us to review who is going to be represented in that committee.
Okay, we don't have an item on the agenda for that, but I'll put an item on the agenda for next week to name a committee and a recommendation on that. Let me just end it with, end the discussion with this on two issues. One, I've been pushing for a long time to have a courtroom out, out at the jail because it, it's also, I think, not only cheaper for transportation costs, but I think that if you've got a permanent presence of the district attorney's office and a public defender system out there, getting, getting these inmates, you're going to see turnaround in terms of getting people in and out of our system much quicker, and the long-term reduction in costs is going to be significant. Short-term and long-term reduction in costs in terms of, in terms of housing inmates is going to be substantial. And I've advocated, I've asked that we start looking at having a jail, actually, this was my idea some time ago to do this. Secondly, just to address one thing that Judge Lopez mentioned, I think the commissioners some time ago, a few weeks ago or a couple of months ago, decided that we need to address the security issue on the administration side regardless of whether or not you have courtrooms there. I think that we've reached a point where it's not just a question of providing security to the judicial, judicial side of the courthouse, but you need to have security for all of it. And since you're going to have either the DA's office there or the, the courtroom there, and you're going to have the tax assessor collector's office, and you have the county clerk's office, and a lot of monies coming in and so forth, that I think that we, we have, I think, concluded, and I'm, I'm assuming that the new administration will agree with me on this, that security issues have to be addressed in the admin, the old administration side regardless of who goes out there.
Can I agree?
And so, that's going to be, so you'll see eventually, I think, once this whole thing is, because, because the DA's office is going to be there anyway. And, and they're either there or the other side. Courtrooms are either there or on the other side. So, you're going to need security for those folks, and, and it's, it's time. It's just time. You know, we've been extremely lucky up to now, and, and really, the only reason, I think we've all known, that we need to address that security issue quickly, the only reason we haven't is, is because of the costs associated with it, because it's not just about, about buying a, a couple of metal detectors, it's about staffing it. And the staffing component of it is going to cost a few hundred thousand dollars alone, but it has to happen. So, I don't think the court, I don't think the courts need to be concerned about the security issue with respect to which side to go on because that's going to be addressed no matter what. In other words, these commissioners, I believe, are ready to do something about security on that side of the building anyway.
Well, you know, of course, security is something very important to us because it's so volatile. And I agree with you. We had in the original plans put in for a district court and a county court out at the jail, but because of financial restraints, we didn't, you know, do it. But yes, I think right now is the time that we definitely need to look at it, and we definitely need to push that issue and try to work and even, you know, try to see if there's funding for special courts or other funding that we can look at to see if it can help the county supplement and, of course, help us have the courts out there. And the sheriff is very much aware that we're very much in favor of that.
David?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just one brief comment. I appreciate the Child Welfare Board being here this morning, that CPS being here. Having personally witnessed as long ago as yesterday, a child that came, was brought, you know, to my pharmacy where I was yesterday, that I had a staff member asking the person that came in that had the child, what's the name of the child? Baby girl. No, the name, you know, we need the name. Baby girl. And I won't say the last name for reasons that you all know. But she says, no, I just have this child that was given to me today because I'm taking care of her, because whoever adopts her gets to name her. And I felt like, you know, I mean, it's just the saddest thing in the world, you know, to experience for, you know, somebody to be born one day waiting for adoption by someone not in the total best health after one day of existence in this world. And the fact that you're here today shows that you care about what you're doing, the fact that you're here today, and you will be part of the discussions to our decisions that are made with what happens to best serve these children. You know, you have my personal support, and I know everyone else. It's just a matter of sitting down and looking at what we have and looking at what can best serve everyone, the judges, the DA's office, CASA, and had a conversation with the chairman of the CASA board this morning, and, you know, they need to be there just as well, Judge, you know? But thank you all for bringing this to the forefront for us.
Okay, why don't, why don't we do this? You've already heard the discussion. I'll put it on the agenda next week for appointment of a committee to deal with this office space. It would be nice if y'all would be here next week, some of y'all, or all of y'all, if you want to.
And seeing that's not a problem, you guys being on the committee. I welcome you to be on the committee, okay? That's not a problem at all.
Maybe you could call the judge's office...
But let's not be at odds with each other because this is on the agenda. Let's work together, okay? We'll work with you.
We'll go ahead and table...
Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, Judge, okay?
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were talking...
Yes, I was.
I wasn't interrupting.
Thank you very much. You know, I don't want to be at odds, and I don't think we want to be at odds at all. We want to work together, but we have certain needs, you know? And I welcome you to be on that committee. You know, if you could get one representative from each agency, that's not a problem. I thank you.
All right, motion. Do I have, we're going to table item number 13 in order to deal with this through the committee. Is that all right? Okay. And thank you for your presentation. And I, we really appreciate your service. You're doing God's work.
Thanks.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that we are going to, we would like to have someone on that committee, and that we appreciate everything that the DA's office does to try and help us. In clarification to the gentleman from the DA's office, there is no one from the DA's office on the child welfare. And I know that because we are the board. That's it.
All right, thanks. Maybe he'd like to serve on your board. David, you've got an opportunity.
He just volunteered.
We'll put it on the agenda for, to appoint him next week.
Is a small space, but I'm sure if the focus had been by the courtroom where you all used to be, the commissioners, it's pandemonium outside the courtroom. And I'm sure that noise doesn't help anyone in the courtroom or anyone who's preparing to go in.
Well, mainly, the, the concern is the, the main concern of the children, and all of us experienced that.
Just to clarify, I'd love to be on the board. I was under the impression that Victor Ramírez, formerly with our office, was on the, at least the advisory board, but...
Have someone personally...
Yeah, he just, he just left a couple of days ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm sorry. My name is Alicia Cardenas. I'm the executive director of CASA. Please excuse my voice trembling. Speaking into microphones is not my thing. We do thank you all for taking us into consideration. We know this will be tabled. I, I thought I'd be arriving on time. Unfortunately, I guess I miss most of it. I would like to say that we would appreciate any space you all have for us, and you all suggesting space for the children to have with their families, to be out of the hallways, out of the cold hallways, out of the floors, is simply fantastic. These kids need a warmer space, as you all know. I don't want to take up any more of your time. If you all have any questions for me, I'd be more than glad to answer them. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judge, can I, would the two organizations maybe call your office with who they would like by next week so that when we have the meeting, we know?
Okay, what, I mean, I, yeah. We'll have, I'll recommend a member of the Child Welfare Board and a representative from CASA on the committee, okay?
And also, who will be coordinating the committee? I mean, who's going to be in charge of it? You know?
So, you know, coordinating...
And who wants, who, which one of y'all want to be on the committee?
Well, I think she had already asked Sophie.
Sophie had indicated an interest in it because she was new, and she said she wanted to become much more familiar with it, so I got great.
Okay, then we'll, then I'll...
Being glad to serve.
I'll recommend the committee next week. Okay. Yes, you may.
Honorable commission, Judge, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fernando Ruiz. I came today to visit with you all before we close the year. And to personally, I want to thank Judge Inoosa and whatever public servant was not reelected for having participated in the political process of our community. Whether it be right or wrong, the decisions that you've made, this has happened to time in history. We can study from the sumerian era to the present. And we will address certain eras where we have had bad administrations in monarchies and in republics and whatever. I do, and I will address the era, the era of Oedipus because he was a very bad administrator. But even if you're good or bad, you will always be criticized. This is how politics is. This is how the process works, the plus and the minuses. And the thing is to reach a consensus, which we are seeking right now, so that we can have a betterment for the community. As we address certain issues, and for example, there's issues about the children and all that, we would have to address first education and immigration. You know, we cannot continue to educate all the people from Mexico. The culture here is one of respect for the community and for officers of the law, et cetera. We have people invading our territory. We're going to have real serious problems because we have very serious problems in Matamoros with all these cartels and things like that that are even coming into our era. We have serious problems because our children are not getting educated. If we would educate our children, it would cost us less than to have them in prison there. Costs us $45,000 a year to house an inmate. It doesn't cost us that much to, to, for them to see and to get a proper education, to have tutoring, to participate in the process of this district and not say, this is my district and this is my district. No, we need more parks. I had recommended to the school district three years ago. We have 52 schools. We have 52 parks. Those schools belong to the community, belongs to us. And we would have the, the playgrounds for the children to visit after they visit with their school for the day. We would be ahead of the game because some of these children, their parents are working, they return home to be alone. No supervision, none of this. So there's many problems that we have to address. But Judge, I salute you and all your commission, and everybody expressing you today because this is what makes the process democratic, oversight and accountability. Thank you. You all have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Okay. All right, do you hear motion to table item number 13?
So moved.
Motion, my commission, Tamayo, second, my commission, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. Motion to go to executive session?
Acknowledged as a presentation?
Oh, well, it was a workshop. There's no action on it, yeah. Motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Motion, my commission, Tamayo, second, my commission, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries.
And I believe they had some stickers for us?
All right. All right, we're now, oh, okay, thank you. We are now in executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.072, 551.07... 1A, 551.071B and 2, 551.0712. Thank you. Item, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. Item number 73, A, B, and C, no, A and B, do you have a motion to table? No discussion was had. Does a motion to table by commissioner, that's second, by commissioner Tamayo, for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. Item number 72C, possible action on discussion and consultation with delinquent tax attorney on bids received at the November 7th, 2006 tax resale where property struck off the Cameron County for itself and other taxing entity. What's the motion on that, counsel?
Acknowledged report.
Acknowledged report, and the action will be taken under 11, or 11.
All right, there's a motion by commissioner, second...
Second.
Second by commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. 72D, possible action on confer with Commissioner Torrego Council concerning claim of quality data imaging. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Motion by commissioner, Wood, second by commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. Items number 72E and G, which is on the proposed contract with Red River Corporations and proposed settlement of any claims. Okay, motion to table, motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
By commissioner, got it, second by commissioner, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries.
Not my abstention?
We didn't, we didn't do F. Now, that was tabled, right?
Tabled, yeah.
Motion to table. Motion to table on item number 72F, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 47 Primera Road in the precinct four area.
I move to table.
Motion to table by commissioner, second by commissioner, got it, sending for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. Okay.
Judge, if you have to attend to that.
Huh?
Item 10 and 11, you might, you might go ahead and act on those.
Okay, all right. Item number 10, discussion and possible action on bids received at the November 7th, 2006 tax resale for the following properties struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions. Motion to accept the bids received at the November 7th, 2006 tax resale for the following, for the properties that are listed in the agenda, on the, in the, in the packet.
So moved.
Motion, my commission, got it, second by commissioner, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries. 11, discussion and possible action on resolutions approving the bids received on tax resale properties on November 7th, 2006. Motion.
I move to approve the bids.
Second by commissioner, Wood, second by commissioner, got it, sending for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I have both motion carries.
Judge, would you like the, the liquid tax attorneys to do the presentation right now or wait till later on or for next week? That's number two, sir.
Can we wait till next week?
Yes.
All right. Motion to table item number two.
So moved.
Motion by commissioner Tamayo, second by commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Three budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules. Questions, concerns, comments, complaints, do you hear motion to approve?
Do you have anything else, have you?
No, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by commissioner, got second by commissioner Tamayo for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Minutes, November 28th and December 7th. Are you all ready on those?
My, my computer was down.
Okay, motion to table by commissioner Tamayo, second by commissioner, regarding for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Claims, uh, do you hear?
We have additional claims to present. Uh, before you...
No, wasn't?
Yes, it's this list. It begins with check number 172743 and ends with check number 172752.
So moved. Motion to approve by commissioner, second to that motion.
Second.
My commissioner, uh, would any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Item, and note my abstention on warrant number 00172523 to the Guadalupe Water District and warrant number 00172657 to Southwest Keith.
And note my abstention?
Yeah.
On 00172596.
All right. Consideration and possible action regarding the creation of a mental health task force. We put this on the agenda because we have a serious problem here in Cameron County on the lack of psychiatrists. As I understand, based upon what I know, what I've been told, we have, I believe, one psychiatrist in all of Cameron County today. And...
That's available to the public.
That's available to the public. The need is tremendous. I can't remember what the rate, what the number was that we would need to have in a county of the size of Cameron County, but we're not even, you know, we're very far away from, from getting to that point. There was a meeting here last week, I believe, or week before, to discuss this issue with the mental health professionals in different hospitals all over Cameron County. And everybody recognizes that this is something that needs to be addressed. We've been approached on, on, on helping organize a task force and so we, we feel that, uh, it's important that we do something on that now. And so we're recommending that we go forward on a mental health task force. There's an agenda item that we've attached to there and there's a list of people that attended the meeting and, and that's who we're recommending to be on the mental health task force to start the dialogue and have, um, um...
The, the actual list that's attached are people who volunteered to serve on the, on the task force. There was probably 100, 150 people in attendance during the meeting.
Okay. I have, I have a request for a discussion. Ruth Hunter is here and I know this is one of the areas that she wanted to speak on. Ruth, come on up.
Thank you, Judge and commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here before you this morning and I represent the University of Texas Brownsville School of Health Sciences. I work in the dean's office and it's been my challenge for the last slightly over a year to help research how we could be a part of helping the community receive the services that it so desperately needs. We started with Brownsville only because Brownsville is where our university is located and because Brownsville has no psychiatric services and no psychiatrist who is in private practice here in Brownsville. Some studies show that our community should have 14 psychiatrists to be able to meet the needs of people here. So we've been, uh, over the last year, I've held focus groups, I've met with all the doctors in the community that would meet with us at Valley Regional, met with the administration of both hospitals here, interviewed people who receive services through the Brownsville Community Health Clinic, as well as people who receive their services from private physicians here in town. Our goal was to try to decide if we could be a part of this by providing a service known as telepsychiatry, which is probably a term new to most of you, but it's a way of providing psychiatric services here through a psychiatrist in a remote location via a television connect. It's been done successfully in many areas. And the more we delved into this problem, the more we discovered that that was a step in the right direction, but certainly not the end to what our community needs. We were very pleased that the judge helped us in pulling together this meeting a week and a half ago, very pleased by the response. There were professional people here, there were private citizens here, there were people from all walks of life, all with one common interest, that, that we need to have psychiatric services and more mental health services in all ranges here available to the citizens of this county. We have people traveling to other places to receive medical care in that area and that's just not a possibility for some of our residents. So although what we offer as a, as a step in the right direction could be started immediately with funding, we know that the, the need exceeds that. And so we would be willing and excited to be a participant and to help in this task force in any way. And we applaud the county for taking this step to help us better serve the residents of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, I might add that the University of Texas Science Health Center in Houston is providing that service through telemedicine at two sites, which are at the Santa Maria School District with their telemedicine clinic and at the Las Yescas Elementary School through, through them. But it's, it's limited only to the children that attend that school.
That's, that's true. There's also a third location that has started since you were involved in the, in the design of those first two. And that is at our own university campus.
Wonderful.
We have, uh, in our student health services, we have a telehealth communication setup with the Houston-based organization and they see our students.
Wonderful.
And they receive counseling and, and services through them. It started out the first month with one. This month, we had 12 students receiving regular counseling through there. So the need is there, the service works, and telepsychiatry has been used successfully in many, many areas. Basically, it began with the military and jail facilities because it was a way of providing services in and out of areas that were very remote. But it, seen in an area like Brownsville and other remote areas of the county, of the country, I'm sorry, that it's just virtually impossible to get enough physicians there to take care of the people. This is one way of taking care of those needs.
Since the meeting last week, I've had an opportunity to talk to a, a young psychiatrist that is moving to Brownsville.
Great.
However, he's not moving to be open to the public. He's moving with an agency here. He really is moving here because he grew up in Matamoros and is from the area, so he wants to relocate his family here. And in talking to him, his concern is one of the things we discussed last week. He knows there are no psychiatrists in the county and he knows that there needs to be about 14 or 15 available to the public at all times. He knows that if he were to open a private practice, he would be inundated and would not be able to do what he would like to do as far as the type of services he'd like to be able to give. But he said that his intentions were coming here, working for a couple of years with this entity that he's going to be working with, and then looking at the possibility of opening a, a standalone practice of his. And he has committed to me to help in recruiting psychiatrists in, for example, where he did his residency and other schools that, that might have residents that are willing to come into the area and establish practices. We're going to have to travel and look and seek all avenues to try to get this, this problem solved in the county.
Well, we appreciate your help and you're certainly right. We've talked with the administration of both hospitals. They have been actively trying to recruit psychiatrists to come to this area and one of the biggest stumbling blocks, aside from social things and whatever, is the fact that they fear that with just one of them here, they would not be able to provide the care and the follow-up treatment required by their patients.
Exactly. I think another fear is the lawsuit situation that many of them have encountered. And I know that having a personal friend that was a practicing psychiatrist, you know, that had him made a decision to move on to a different type of medical practice in which you work for an agency and at least have that layer of protection when you do your work. But that's a reality that we're faced with, with that profession, you know, they, they, they fear that situation.
Unfortunately, that's true, not just in psychiatry, but in many areas of medicine.
That's what I was going to add.
Yeah, but we have other areas present and still working in this county. That one, you know, just up and left a few months ago and there was an office of five in it.
Right.
Okay.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to create the mental health task force.
Second. Can I make a recommendation? Can, can we have a member of this commissioners' court to add?
John, John Lewis Chair.
John to, to be on the task force.
I'll include that in my motion.
And then Ruth, did you want to be on this task force or not?
Yes, sir.
Can we add Ruth Hunter as well?
Sure. And we are going to leave it open in case others would like to say.
Yeah, I mean, we, this is an open thing, but we want, and, and we would recommend just to get it started and then y'all, the task force can decide. John, John be the, the, the chair until things get going. If you want to reelect him chair, that's fine. I think that would be a wise thing because he, he, I think, is prepared to take a leadership role in this issue that's so important. I just want to point something out, just, you know, because I, I really don't, I don't think that the reason we have a shortage of psychiatrists is because they're fearful that they're going to get sued. I mean, I, I, I think there's other factors and I'm not sure what they are, to be honest with you, but I, but I do believe that it's a crisis situation that needs to be addressed. I mean, um, and it's part, in my opinion, of this whole attitude that the state has towards mental health. You know, it, it is not viewed as a disease and as an illness. It is, it is, by the state of Texas, you know, it is just an additional reflection of the state's refusal to recognize how this illness affects our families in the state of Texas. We have 50, 50 beds in, in, in the Rio Grande Valley for, for mental health commitments. 50 in a population of 1 million. We're entitled to double that amount under state allocation formulas. The other 50 beds are in San Antonio. And so we're getting the short end of the stick, to put it mildly. And I think it is something that I believe that because it so dramatically affects our community, that it needs to be a major priority. And that's why, you know, I'm, I'm glad that the commissioners' court is, is willing to take the lead on setting up this task force because it really has to be something that we spend the time and the resources to address, along with the other members of the community, along with the other issues that are facing us in the area of mental health. I hope that this legislative session, this commissioners' court takes an aggressive role with respect to state funding on mental health services in the Rio Grande Valley because we are getting short change in a very big way in a whole variety of areas, but primarily in the existence of beds to address the needs. We have no juvenile, no youth, beds for our kids, none, none. I mean, the 50 beds we got are for adults. We have no kid beds in our community. If you gets, if you have a child that needs psychiatric care and a commitment, you've got to go elsewhere and your family has to somehow follow you and be there. I mean, it's a similar situation to what our veterans address, you know, I, I mean, are, are facing, where you have to have a whole family go all the way to San Antonio and live out of, a, a car while your, your family member's being treated at Otting Murphy's Hospital. It's just wrong and, and the Rio Grande Valley again is being neglected in this particular area. And I think it's just something that we have to make a major priority. So thank you, Ruth, for being here.
Thank you.
And not only that, Judge, but it's impacting, for instance, I was talking to someone involved with End of the Road Ministries and they were telling me that, that I guess hospitals drop people off at their doorstep and, and, and those numbers are increasing. So there's a tremendous impact, not, not just, and, and of course, we're concerned about the patient, we're concerned about the family, but it's also making an impact with these social services that are out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Seven, consideration, authorization to purchase one SWAT counter-attack truck utilizing the Texas National Guard procurement process, dash 1122 and utilizing Texas law enforcement 1122 program, Lenco armor vehicle.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner. With me is Lieutenant Danny Huerta. And a week ago, I think, I took the time to, to, to visit with each one of the commissioners and explain to them exactly what this vehicle could do for the sheriff's office and for the people of Cameron County, specifically because we're all concerned about the security throughout the county and throughout the nation. And we feel that it's one of the vehicles that is of essential need to us at the present time because we're the ones that respond to all the schools and all the small cities who do not have the capacity or the personnel to answer some of these calls. In the past year, we have answered some of these, what I would consider very dangerous calls, 23 different times. As a matter of fact, these people are here, which is a special force, just responded to a call here where they had threatened, I believe, Judge Magdalia Lopez, where she was presiding over a case with one of the Texas syndicates. And they had advised them that they were going to bring in a bunch of people with grenades and sub machinas and what have you, and were going to break loose this individual. So in essence, we provided the security, which we always do, and we feel that this vehicle right here, which is what they use out in Iraq, Iran, by the federal government, is something that we definitely need here to protect the citizens of this county and this great nation.
The, just, you know, for a little bit of background, the sheriff's department has a SWAT counter-attack truck that they purchased used some time ago. And it, it is something to have because you need to have one, but it clearly does not meet their needs. It's old and I'm not sure that it would provide the necessary protection to our SWAT teams in the event of an, if they're facing a particular event that required the use of a SWAT vehicle. I would hate for them to be in the process of responding to a major emergency and that thing breaks down or does not provide the protection necessary. I think we need to recognize that Cameron County is a county of almost 400,000 people. We're the 11th largest county in the state of Texas. We are considered an urban area. We have urban issues that we're facing. We're a border community facing, bordering Mexico with major issues going on in Mexico today with all these gangs and inner, inner, um, drug cartel warfare going on that's affecting not just Mexico, but it, it's coming across to affect us. And, and on top of the fact that we're a coastal community where those issues are also, the, the coastal nature of our community also puts us at risk of having either terrorists or people who are dealing in drugs come in from that end. And so, you know, we have some serious challenges that our law enforcement community faces today in, that, that could result in a loss of a lot of lives, including our own deputy sheriffs, SWAT team members, if they're faced with a situation without the proper equipment. So, I mean, I think this is an important thing for us to now address. I don't think that we should be requiring our officers to be in a vehicle that clearly is, is not me, is not set up to meet the needs of today. And I think we need to figure out a way to, to find the resource to fund this. Any recommendations on that, Sheriff? How much are these things?
This around about a couple hundred thousand dollars. I hope that the auditor, like he did for the judges, which they greatly deserve to have that fans because they need to be protected. Hopefully, he can do the same thing for the sheriff's office so we can protect the rest of the citizens here in Cameron County. If you recall in 1997, Judge, we, we launched a great heroes, two great people out there, plus one of our officers that was injured in that particular gun battle in Wasad for 11 months. It took us maybe six, seven hours because the cornstalks were about six, seven feet tall and there was no way that we could go there. And we had information that there was still other people out there and were waiting for us to, to enter that field. Fortunately, we were able to get in there, there was nobody there, but we worked at bay at all times because we could not attack it. This right here would give us the opportunity if we needed to, to go in there and really take care of the situation. So...
As a direct result of that incident, is we formed a SWAT team.
Right. Well, we, we did form a SWAT team. We do have 16 members and they work, they work out regularly on a daily basis.
Well, I see where our budget officer signed off on it. Maybe we can hear from him.
Well, the signature is, is just there that I know it's going to be placed on the agenda. There is no direct funding source for it right now. It could be included as part of the overall equipment list. The reason that's not on is because we're still trying to reduce what's being requested. Right now, the total requested amount is, is like 2.1 million dollars. So I'm in the process of trying to scale it back with some of the departments. That particular vehicle, which is 200,000 dollars, depending on, on the terms of the financing, something like that, I don't know if it would be considered, say, heavy equipment. Those are financed over five years, but you're still talking about over 40,000 dollars a year in additional payment, which if you add that to the other list, which would be around 2.4, 2.5 million dollars, and I need, still need to scale it back if you wanted to go that route. Or there's, there's also the, the settlement funds that, that are out there, which it's unrestricted, that could be allocated for that. If you want to do it, add it to the equipment list, I plan on having that probably completed for the, say, the second week or the second meeting in January. I'm not sure of the urgency of ordering that particular piece of equipment, but it could be added or considered at that time.
Well, I think you need to add it to the equipment list and I think that you need to come back with a recommendation on funding, whether it's through a source like, we funded this wall a couple, last week on, or through, or through the settlement funds. But one way or the other, you, you need to come, make it part of the equipment, equipment list that comes back to the county for approval. And that's my recommendation and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I just would like to ask one question. Is, would the sheriff's department be willing to use any of the... Is, would the Sheriff's Department be willing to use any of the Fund 90 funds? Not totally, but, you know, just to help?
Partial.
At the present time, we do have a little money there, but we don't have that kind of money at the present time. We do expect to get some of that money there, and if he does, you know, we don't have any problem helping out the Commissioner. It's just that sometimes the courts takes a long time when they process this particular, and if I was to tell you, I can give you a certain amount of money...
No, and I don't mean to buy it outright. I mean, as Javier mentioned, with the equipment list, it would be like a five-year commitment of a certain amount, you know?
It's up for me to say yes, because I don't know what we'll get in terms of, on a yearly basis, as far as that goes. And as you can see, the item right next on, I'm requesting that hopefully I can help out some of this, with some of the clothing allowance, and I propose to get some of the money from the Fund 90. At the present time, I think we have somewhere around 40,000, maybe 45,000, as far as that goes. But we use also that money to pay overtime to the officer when the need arises. And we happen to get a good bundle of money. I don't have a problem helping the county in the later future, okay?
I'd make a motion to put it on the equipment list, so we can look at it and see where we can get the funding from, to provide the needed asset for the Sheriff's Department. I know this is also part of, you know, what we learned nine years ago, 10 years ago, from that incident that happened, is, you know, the entire county was very, very open to having things come up, emergencies that they could not handle. And over the years, we've addressed some of those issues, including the communication system that's in place now, where all the agencies can communicate with each other. I think this is a continuing part of making ourselves, putting ourselves in the right position to be able to handle problems that come up in the future, and taking care of formation of the SWAT team. These types of things are very important to the safety and security of everyone in the county, especially the smaller communities and unincorporated areas that don't have the funds or the ability to be able to man everything that they might need to take care of, that the county steps in and helps them with. So, I appreciate your efforts on this, Sheriff.
Well, thank you. But the main thing is the lives of these brave men that are out there every single day, and they've been working real hard. As a matter of fact, just for the, just for your information, we have, during the course of this time, we have gathered all the information, and we have a layout of all the buildings of the schools here in the county, plus the courtrooms here, and the district courts in here, and part of the bridges, so that we can be able to respond when the need arises. This is part of what the SWAT team does, so definitely it is something that is greatly needed for the protection of these officers. Thank you very much for your comments, Commissioners.
This is a second?
A second.
Motion by, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Hey, consideration, authorization to transfer funds from Fund 90 to compensate 24 officers for clothing allowance. Do you have a motion for that? Do you have a motion to approve that?
I saw that.
Motion by Commissioner Wood. There is a second to that motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
I just have a question, then.
Well, yes, Commissioner.
Is this a yearly stipend that we normally do for them, or...
We've done for the last, since I was here, last time I did it, I did it last year. However, I hope that next year, we can put in the regular budget, so the Commissioner will know about it, so we can give some of these people. These people are not the people that wear the uniforms. Consequently, they buy their own clothing, as far as that goes, and not just, we'd like to have them real nice and neat all the time, and which they comply. So, I figure this is one way that they can, you know, help buy, you know, a couple pair of neckties and a pair of pants, but that's about all they can get out of it.
Right.
This stipend.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Nine, consideration, authorization to fund voice and data system and equipment for Harlingen Annex building.
Judge, if I may ask, and if I may have the notes of the code there on the consent item, we also have on number 45, and I thought maybe you might have a question, I'd like to answer that particular question, in the event that you might have something like that in there.
Forty-five?
Yeah, 45 on the consent item, Judge, Commissioners.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner, Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, consideration, authorization to fund voice and data system and equipment for Harlingen Annex building. Rudy?
Good morning. This is for the Harlingen Annex, and what we're asking for are two items in that request. One is to appropriate about $80,000 for the complete voice and data communication needs. And then the second part is to allow us to do a site survey, which is going to cost about $8,000 out of that, so that we can upgrade the communication link between the Harlingen Annex and the Levi's Building for the Sheriff's Office. We're looking at putting a wireless bridge. It's a one-time cost. We don't have the total cost on that yet, because we need to determine antenna height to clear any interference, but there is a survey that needs to be done to identify those possible problems and come up with a correct solution. And it'll be $8,000 to do the survey, and it takes about a week.
Who did the survey at the Public Works Building in Browser? Was it AT&amp;T?
I do not know. But I can find out.
I just would hope it wasn't AT&amp;T, because we had some difficulties there, right?
At the Public Works?
Yeah, with the wireless communication.
Where we had some problems was with the Construction Division and Engineering Division, and that was a turnkey.
I'm sorry, Constru-, yeah.
Yes, that was with AVNIT. And I believe that, at the time, they didn't do a thorough site survey. I think they did one of those, well, we'll put an antenna here, antenna here, it should work, and off it goes. That's why we had some problems. They took all the equipment back. There was no financial cost to the county, but we did lose time. AT&amp;T is proposing a turnkey. They're going to take complete responsibility for ensuring that the project will work.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
So...
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo.
Was this in the budget on the Harlingen Annex to begin with?
I don't believe that it was a specific budget. I know that there's a pool of funds that need to be identified, and we've put this funds together, or this budget together, and says, this is how much we need to get, what we need done.
Is this going to fit within that budget?
Yes. We believe it will be complete.
So, the money's in place, basically?
Yes.
Any further...
At this point, the only amount that's been allocated to the Harlingen Project, Harlingen Annex Building, was the contract price for the construction of the actual facility, the, of course, the professional service for the architects. And I know there was a change order, but I can't remember right now if there was, if there was any additional cost. I think it was within the actual budget. So, this would actually be on top of that.
So, this is not in the budget right now?
Because it was not part of the original contract price, because the contractor wasn't responsible for it.
But this is not in the budget right now?
No, it's not. It would have to be added. It would have to, it is, since it is part of the building, is an allowable cost between bond funds, and there are bond funds still available to be allocated to that project.
There's money available?
Correct. A budget would have to be amended to move the monies to that.
When will this stuff be looked at, to be sure that this is really what's needed? You know, is the vendor just coming down, telling us this is what we need, or have we analyzed it?
We're actually looking at it right now, but we wanted to make sure that we set aside the necessary amount of funds, so that when we put our solution together, we know that we won't exceed that, but we will bring it before the court, says this is the actual cost, and this is the technology that's going to be needed to be placed in.
So, you don't think it'll go more than this?
That's correct.
You might look at it real close and be sure this is what they need. The system we have here in this building is ridiculous.
Yes.
It's way, way overbuilt.
What we're looking at for the Harlingen Annex is a traditional nor-tilt system, the regular phone system, at this point. But we need to iron out, make sure we got the necessary number of phones, and the features that they're looking for in that phone service.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Fourteen, consideration, authorization to allocate additional funds for the renovation of the Levi Building in San Bernardino, Texas.
We need 12, Judge.
Did I skip 12?
Yeah.
I thought we had tabled it.
No, that's a different one.
Oh, okay. Consideration, possible pool of lease agreement with Cameron County Child Advocacy Center, Maggie's House for Property, located in San Bernardino Annex property. Do you have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Fourteen, consideration, authorization to allocate additional funds for the renovation of the Levi Building, Levi Building in San Bernardino, Texas. Who's got this? Marcellino, do you have this?
I said Marcellino, just a minute.
Marcellino's.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. The reason I'm here this morning is to ask you your permission and authorization to allocate some more funds, as far as the construction for Levi's Building. At the beginning of the project, I have the copy of the request. I didn't include any woodworking inside the building that we've been added, we're working on it, and also, we found out the exterior paint of the building that we need to, I think we're going to do in house, too. And minor things that we need to address, too.
Who will the money be coming from? Javier?
It's actually the same source, the same fund issue that was there. You're just allocating more funds, and what the court has traditionally done is, you know, there's a list of projects, and whichever ones get done first, money's allocated to that, or which ones are ongoing, and then, at the end, I guess the last project to be completed is the one that...
Do you anticipate any other costs that might come in, Marcellino, besides these?
No, on that also include, as far as the, we're going to utilize the existing AC unit, so I already put some money there in order for us to cover the expenses, too, in order for us to keep it running properly on the units.
So, you don't anticipate...
Because we have several others.
You don't anticipate addition?
I didn't anticipate a process for the AC condition.
So, move. Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Fifteen, consideration, possible authorization to execute an agreement between Cameron County and American Electric and Power for the installation of security lights at the Laguna Heights Community Park. Do you have a motion to approve that?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Sixteen, consideration, possible action to execute an agreement between Cameron County and American Electric and Power for the installation of converting overhead line to underground. Do you have a motion on that?
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Seventeen, consideration, authorization to amend the Cameron County Parks and Recreation policy procedures.
Is it any different than the one we have here?
The only thing is just the, formalize the... Yeah. Please, to formalize the direction that the court approved last week, which is to increase the rates 15%.
Do you have a motion?
So, move.
Judge. Second by Commissioner Benavides, any for a discussion? All those in favor, signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Eighteen.
Judge, excuse me, just one thing that I added to this, and with y'all's approval, or disapproval, I can eliminate it, but what we did was, we increased the tent rates by $3. It was $12, and we increased them to $15 as well, which is, wasn't approved last week, but...
Well, you should have told us, but I think that's all right. Unless you have a problem with that. Okay. So, we approved that right now?
Yes.
Even though you didn't tell us?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Here it goes in there. Oh, here it is.
Mendez. Eighteen, consideration and possible action regarding renewal terms and conditions of the ASO stop-loss and aggregate stop-loss monthly premiums between United of Omaha Life Insurance Company and Cameron County. I put this on the agenda, because it was brought to my attention that there was a significant increase on the, thank you, Mr., on the charges for the stop-loss and aggregate loss monthly premiums. And I didn't know that we had approved that increase. Maybe we did, and we looked for it, but we could not find any Commissioners Court action where, one, this had been presented to us, and, two, that we had approved this increase. It's something like a, did I hear right, a 67% increase, or something like that? Some significant increase on our, on our policy premiums on this. And I wanted to get to the bottom of this, what happened, why it was increased without us approving it, why we were not told about it, and why was it increased? And so, the first question I have is, am I wrong, or am I right? Was there a significant increase in the policy premiums? And, two, were we told about this?
My name's Kerry Malik. I was a representative for Mutual of Omaha when this started, so I guess I'm responsible for bringing it to the administration, and then I guess administration brings it to you all. I guess I was under the understanding that it was, there was some kind of a approval made to it. I wasn't the one who would have done that, but I will be able to give you some information about all this.
But there wasn't an increase.
And one portion of it, now, one of the things you have to understand is, we're talking about our insurance dollar here, and that's only one portion of the insurance dollar, and a very, very small portion of it. So, the actual cost of the program is actually going down.
About how much would this cost to Cameron County, this specific premium?
That particular item, that did go up 67%. That was the stop-loss premium. That's one portion of what we do.
How much more do we have to pay per year from this increase in the stop-loss premium of 67%?
On just the stop-loss premium, it did, it goes up about $30,000, just on that portion.
For the whole year?
That's per month.
Correct.
Per month?
Per month, correct.
It's $382,000 a year.
A year?
It's about 400, a little over 400.
Over 400.
Right. In fact, I have some on...
Because the numbers I'm looking at is 63.8%, not 67%.
I mean, I think that's...
Well, when you add all of it together, it's about 67%.
When you add it all together, it's $460,000, I believe.
Yeah, well, I broke it down. I just know what the total was.
Well, who did you tell that it increased? Because my office didn't get this information.
Well, I sent the emails to the Human Resources Office, the County Auditor's Office, and that's my typical, you know, MO of how it goes.
And are we required to approve this new premium increase at the Commissioners Court?
Well, it's actually also a renewal, a one-year renewal of the terms and conditions, and someone, I'm assuming, would have to approve it. I would think it would be us.
Well, what you have in your contract currently is what's called an evergreen clause, and basically, it goes in place unless you terminate it. It's the way it's been done over the last four or five years, since I've been working with it. We haven't always brought it to the Commissioners Court for approval. We did have a contract in 2001 that was approved, which had, again, an evergreen clause, and then we did a bid in 2003. I hope I'm getting the dates right. We did another contract for three years, and so, those are the only ones that I know of, that I was involved in, and we actually came to Commissioners Court to go through that.
But don't you think it would be significant? It would be something that we would need to know about and approve, if you're going to increase our premiums by almost a half a million dollar a year on the stop-loss?
But, but your overall cost went down.
Well, that's not...
You're just talking about one component of it.
Well, that's a hefty component, a half a million dollars. I don't know about you, but a half a million dollars is about a half a penny on the tax rate.
But you're not paying it through that. Your claims dollars went down, and so, the actual budgetable amount went down.
But the claims dollars would have gone down for reasons other than the increase in the stop-loss program, policy, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, basically.
So, that doesn't reflect that. I mean, you're not telling me that our costs went down because you increased our stop-loss policy by half a million dollars, are you?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
So, if, so this is a separate component of the cost that we pay to ensure employees in Cameron County, right?
That's correct.
So, and we have to pay that. I mean, we pay that out of our general fund contribution, or whatever is paid in by the employees, right?
Correct.
So, that, I mean, the trouble I've got, I mean, I, you know, our premiums might have gone down, but there's a whole host of other factors, other than an increase in the premiums that had, had, were the reason for the reduction in our total cost of the program, and I'm troubled by, I'd like to know why somebody didn't tell us. Mark?
Well, who's the Chair of the Insurance Committee?
We have an insurance committee.
Was it put to the Insurance Committee?
Well, who's the Chair of the Insurance Committee?
Was it only Insurance Committee? Did it, was it brought up to the Insurance Committee? Did the Insurance Committee have an opportunity to put it on the agenda?
We're still waiting for the minutes of that committee meeting.
I gave you the minutes all the way back to the beginning of the year. August was when we had the last committee meeting, but this was not brought up because I didn't have any of this information. I didn't have this information, they have it there. I had to retrieve it earlier this week when, when I was asked about it. I had not seen that document until latter part of last week.
But he's saying that he, uh, sent it to you and to the auditor.
I didn't get it. I did not get this one.
Well, it was signed on October the 9th, and I, and I'm wondering...
That was months ago.
But I didn't get it, I really, really didn't get it.
If the authority vested in that person to sign it on October the 9th is really there.
That document is delivered to me on October 9th, I signed it as acknowledgement of what the rates were going to be paid. My understanding is that when you made your personnel director, you're half-paid out of the employee benefits fund, that everything that I get, he gets, and that's my understanding. I was under the understanding that he received all documents and was the plan administrator. And so at this time, we're already into the plan year, a month and nine days, and, uh, we had to act accordingly to keep our insurance policies in place. If we fail to pay, then our policies are subject to cancellation.
Well, I understand that, but our problem is that I think that this commissioner's court would like to have known that they were being asked to pay a half a, half a million dollars more...
I agree with you on that issue.
...per year, and somebody didn't bring it to our attention, and you signed off on it. I mean, I would thought that you would have come to us and said, put it on the agenda, um, I mean, we need to do something about this because this is a significant increase on our, on our premiums that, that affects, you know, affects the Cameron County, um, uh, bottom line budget, I would think, yes?
Uh, I concur, and I did have contemporaneous discussions with your personnel director regarding this issue. So, you know, I'm looking at him and taking his lead as the manager who has paid half his salary from this fund, and I'm expecting that he has a line of communication, not only with the commissioners, but with the administrators that work with you. That's my understanding, and so, no, I can't work on the chain of command here, I don't know that.
Well, he, he just said that he was never informed of this.
Well, the, the thing is, what puzzles me here is that, uh, we formed an insurance committee, and I thought that that would be an added buffer to make sure that we got information, that, that things were being taken care of, Manuel, and if you will recall, there was a lot of discussion about the insurance committee.
I always do, do that. Whenever I get information like this...
I'm not through, Manuel.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And also, uh, we kept asking for minutes of a committee. I, for one, wondered, you know, what is a committee doing? Because we put out money for that committee, initially.
I gave you minutes back to the first of this year, I gave you...
Manuel, how many times did we have to ask for it?
But did this ever come up in insurance committee meeting?
This, this item was, I did not receive. Every time I've gotten one of these items, they've always gone to legal, and we've always presented it to the committee, and we've always brought it to you for your signature. I never sign off on any agreement, financial contracts or any kind, they've always been brought to you. And I've always gone through Delbia, or before then, it was Doug Wright, and they negotiated all the contracts and all that. But in fact, the last time, Commissioner Garza was on our committee, when we had...
No, I was at a meeting, not at a committee.
Well, at, at the meeting of the committee. And so it was brought at that time, but this item I had not seen.
But, so the question, the question I had was, the commissioner, Tamia, was asking about the minutes, they wouldn't be reflected in any meetings because it was never discussed, right?
Right, yes, it would.
Well, there hasn't been a meeting since August, you told us, right? Since October.
Well, this was done October. We did, we did the, the, uh, the RFQ meeting, where you, where to go out for, for a request for qualifications for a consultant to review so we can go out for bids for, for this, and you all approved that.
I have a question. Uh, was that information emailed or, or sent through mail?
Yeah, it was emailed, I, I've got a email trail on it, so it's all on there.
Well, can you bring, give us a copy of the email that you sent out? We'd like to see that.
I would be able to, except I don't work for Mutual of Omaha anymore, uh, and it'd be quite difficult for me to, I, I guess I can get them to give it to me.
Yeah, I would like to see the email where you informed our personnel director and whoever you informed on this issue.
It would be a problem.
Because, because when you were standing back there and we were talking about this issue being discussed in the meetings, you were nodding your head like if you knew that it was discussed in a, in a insurance committee meeting, and, and my question to you is, do you somehow know something that Mr. Villarreal doesn't know? Hold on, Mr. Yates, I, I want to deal with this gentleman here. Um, are you, do you know something that Mr. Villarreal doesn't know, that you know that this issue was discussed in an insurance committee meeting about an half a million dollar increase on our premiums for stop loss?
Well, to my knowledge, the, the overall increase was talked about. We talked about how the plan was running. We went through a lot of the documents you have here, and say not all of these, but we provided claim information, we go through the renewal, we go through the whole process of renewal, hey, the claims are dropping, the overall program is doing really well, with the exception of our stop loss, where we had a very, very large claim that affected, you know, what we could do on stop loss, basically paralyzed us on the stop loss because we had a large ongoing claim, really couldn't do anything about it, and this increase that you have right now is a, you know, a one-time occurrence, so...
But that's not what I asked you. I think...
So yes, this stuff was discussed, do we, do we line item every, every item? The answer to that is, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
Well, the question I have, you mean, you're saying that you discussed this particular issue with the insurance committee?
That's, to best of my recollection, we talked about the renewal in the, uh, in the, uh, insurance committee meeting.
And I concur that, uh, possible increases in stop loss insurance was discussed, because by, uh, with, since my experience in 1994, when we have significant hits in our specific stop loss, usually the insurance companies come the next year with a sizable increase. And if you'll look at the documentation provided to you, there was a significant hit to our specific stop loss insurance. And, so, when that occurs, and in my experience with, uh, being on the Texas Association of Counties Employee Benefits, uh, Board back in 94 to 96, was, uh, that when you do hit your specific stop loss, the insurance companies address that and try to recoup their funds.
I, I don't think there's a, we're not questioning whether or not, Mark, I mean, let's get something straight. We're not questioning, or I'm not questioning, whether or not, uh, or the reason for the increase yet. What I'm questioning is that Cameron County was asked, has been asked, and has agreed, because we've signed off on this apparently, to pay a half a million dollars more in a premium, and no one ever let any of us know about this. And, and I think that's wrong. I mean, you know, um, I'm hearing from the personnel director who was on that committee that, that that was not discussed. Um, I don't know who else, is anybody in this courtroom here on that committee as well? Was that discussed?
I think what Mark said is more accurate, to where it was brought up that there was possibly being an increase, that document was never presented to the committee, and the amount...
So who authorized the, the extension of the one-year renewal and the terms and conditions that costing the county a half million dollars?
The, the committee does not have the authority.
We did, because we have an evergreen agreement with it, to continue providing the services.
At, at the time that we had this meeting, and I questioned it because I realized, and I knew, that we had had some big, major claims. One of them was capped at a million dollars, and then there were several others that were high, and I said, what's gonna happen to stop loss? Are we gonna get a hit on stop loss? Because we've, this happened before, several years back, when we had some major claims. But I was never given a response to that, because it just stands to reason that when you have major claims, that your insurance is gonna go up, just like it does on your car or anything else. I questioned it, but it, I was not given a response, and I did not see this document, you know? Normally, I get it, I follow the process, and then I present it to you for approval. I never sign off on anything like that, and that's the way it's done. And when we had our meeting, I questioned it, what is gonna happen to stop loss? Because I know that we've had some major, major claims, and it, it happens like that.
So there was a certain amount of discussion on this topic? I'm hearing it from Javier?
Well, but there was a discussion...
But there was, we didn't give a, get a figure, we didn't get a...
Yeah, and what he's talking about is, I, Mr., Burz just handed, handed me a copy of the minutes of the meeting where it was discussed, which was in July, right? Uh, and, and that's when the issue came up, that, that there might be some increase, but the amount of increase is not reflected in the minutes, or, or that an amount was talked about.
The, the renewal at that time hadn't come out yet, so...
Well, that's right.
And I don't know how many times have we met since then, at least a couple, at least two other times since then, so I, you know...
And when it came out...
I would not recall which meeting it was.
And when the renewal came out, it hasn't come to the commissioner's court to even consider what we wanted to do.
Well, it depends on what the contract says that they have with them.
Yeah, in the past, we haven't done.
This is just but one component of the whole amount.
I understand that, but does the contract say anyone can sign for it? And accept it?
I don't know, I don't have one.
And, and, and debt us for half a million dollars?
I usually don't get a copy of contracts.
I don't either.
But that, that's not the contract. That was just a, and the reason this goes to the auditor is because he's the one who pays the bill. It's a notification of what the new rates are, so he can pay what the new bill is. And we do that, basically, just to kinda, as a kind of a courtesy to, so, hey, here's the new rate, is this right? And the answer is yes.
And what we're saying is, we don't know anything about it, because no one brought it to us.
I don't even think I got a copy of the contract. I was not given a copy of the contract. I didn't sign this contract.
The contract that was signed was in 2003. That's the last contract that gets signed.
But for this renewal...
On this renewal.
They've never been signed in the past, they're not contracts. The, the stop loss contract is, is what we call a unilateral contract. It basically is, here's the rate, here's the contract, there's no signature for it.
It says, "The following are the terms for your 12-month renewal effective September 1, 2006." To me, and it's got a place for someone to sign, and, and Mr. Yates signed it, obligating us to a half a million dollars for this 12-month period as a renewal, under renewal terms and conditions of the ASO and stop loss. That's just what this paper says.
Yeah, I, I know, and we've just started using those in the last, I guess, few years. In the past, they haven't been, I, I just know what the process was in the past, this is the first time that this has been, become an issue. In the past, we've just provided the renewal, it goes through, and it was a budget item for the commissioner's court, and as long as it fit in the budget item, and that was the way this went.
The commissioner's court, we look at it, and we consider it, and we understand what's going on, and we know what we're gonna have to pay.
And that's not, for me, I mean, I, I bring the, the pricing to the administration, and then it's worked out from there.
This time we don't.
I'm not typically the person who comes to bring it to commissioner's court.
If you look at that document, it's got a stamp date, that's the day I received it. The front of the document has a stamp date.
That's the day you received the signed document.
It has December...
December 13th.
That's when I got it.
That's when you received the signed document.
On the, I, Richard handed me it September 2003.
Can we go through this, or is this not going to be part of what we're gonna talk about? I mean, really, what I'd like to tell you is, you guys are in as good a financial shape on this as you've ever been in the history that I've been involved over 10 years. I mean, you guys are really in good shape. Your, your budgetable item is dropping from what it was in 2003, you know, three years ago. You were spending $417 an employee, and we're talking about stop loss claims and administration, your cost is dropping. It's not going up. And so you're saying, yes, you're gonna pay $50,000 in a policy amount, but the parts that surround it are all dropping significantly because of PPO contracts, what Mr. Villarreal has been able to do with his wellness programs, the wellness programs that we're adopting. So there's a lot of things in place. I mean, there's a lot of different items that we've been doing, and every one of those line items, we haven't necessarily been bringing them to the commissioner's court. Maybe that's a mistake from an administration issue, but what overall program is doing is, is great. I mean, you know, I'd really like to say that you guys are doing a wonderful job in putting this thing together, and allowing them to, to do what they do best, and that's manage the program. And so far, this year, it...
We're not here for that, okay? We, we understand that we run a good program. That's not the issue, sir. The issue is, I think it's very frustrating to be notified that our premiums have gone up a half a million dollars, and none of us know about it. None of us know about it. None of us had even an inkling that this had occurred, and I would think that someone would tell us of such a significant increase. We know that our county runs a good self-insurance program. We know that the personnel director gets out there and does everything necessary to reduce our cost in a whole myriad of ways. It is not his fault that there's a half a million dollar increase on the premiums for our stop loss program. What we would like to know is when there is an increase of a significant nature, no matter if there's an evergreen contract, where there's automatic renewal, where in the past I've been asked to sign off on, that we're told that there is that increase, and it's brought to our attention, and a reason given for that, so that we can properly address it. That's what we would like to know. I mean, there are options out there that we can look at, that we've never been given an opportunity to address. There are options out there that we might have been able to pursue, other than pay an additional half a million dollars in a premium, but we were never given that opportunity. A contract was presented to the auditor, he signed off on it, and no one told us, and that is the rub that we have. And it may not be much to you, but it is a lot to us.
I can't help you with that part of it.
I guess you can.
I'm just a guy that brings the paper to you guys.
You know, I mean, I, I'd like to ask the commissioners, and, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna go to where you're at because that happened, but I, I'd like for everyone to look at, this handout on page four, the stop loss premiums claims. And I think, you know, just looking at that page tells me, and I don't know a whole lot about insurance, that, uh, there's a significant problem that year.
There was a very, very large claim. In fact, the county's done real well with that.
Previous two years, you know, I mean, you know, it, it was excellent, but last year it was...
It was heavy.
You know, it was like...
Yeah. You get in, when you have a very large claim, and it's ongoing at the time that your whole process is going, it pretty much handcuffs you for that period of time, because no insurance carrier, and you know, the, the reinsurance market was, was really looked at, I mean, you went to 20 to 30 different companies, and you can find no one who will assume that risk because you have an ongoing claim. It's very difficult, you get put in a very, very difficult position.
Is that particular claim maxed out or closed at this point?
Yes, it's, it's gone now.
It's gone away.
But the unfortunate part is that renewal contracts or reinsurance contracts are done on a yearly basis, and so you have to wait until the next year.
For stop loss.
For just the stop loss, correct.
Uh, did it end before the end of the year it impacted, or did it continue into this current year?
It's, it's continued on into this year.
So we're not gonna see a significant improvement probably this year?
Not, not in this policy year, that's correct. And then it heals itself next year, as long as there, you know, things are going well.
Manageable place.
Right, and then you drop back down again, you've, you've healed your problem, and you're in a pretty good position. And again, as, this is only just really one really small part of your overall program that a, and, and really, it represents 10% of your overall cost this year, last year it was 6.8, it's gonna go back down again to a smaller percentage of it. And, and the reason that's gonna drop to a smaller percentage is your, your claims dollars are the big part of it, and, and as that's been going down, it makes the actual stop loss look like it's more than it is. So, from a funding standpoint, again, you're in as good a position as you've been in in years. I mean, the program's running really well.
I would like the, the committee to convene and to look at this issue as to the increase, and examine what options we had available to us, um, at the time that this was done, and whether or not there was anything that could be done by, by the county in order to not face, you know, a half a million dollar, um, increase in our stop loss premium, because, I mean, I think we had, I, I think we should have the opportunity, I don't think we should be forced into a situation where it's this way or, or the highway, simply because an insurance company says that's the way it is. I mean, I think we should have options. I mean, we all have insurance, whether it's, you know, automobile insurance, home insurance, life insurance, and so forth, um, and some of us have health insurance other than through the county. Um, and when we have, when we're faced with significant increases in our policies, most of the time, we just don't accept it. A lot of times, we look around and see what our options are, and if we want to see about a different way of doing business, or doing business with a different person, then we look at that option. We, that, that's part of the free market that we're involved in, in the United States. And so I'd like to know whether or not we did have any options available to us at the at the time this occurred, so that we know when this comes up that if it does arise in the future, and, you know, and Mutual of Omaha can just tell us anytime they want that they're gonna increase our premium by half a million dollar, you know, on our policies per year, then, well, you know, we'll say, well, what do you do? What do you do? It's gonna happen anyway. And so I just... I... You know, I'd like to see the Insurance Committee get back and examine that issue, because I think we'd all like to know how this issue is addressed when it comes up.
Are you giving them a timeline? I mean...
Well, I think you need to convene a meeting right after the first of the year, and look at this issue. And if it's gonna take more than one meeting, I mean, and look at your options.
We have a request for qualifications, but we haven't realized who has submitted the qualifications. It was advertised. I don't know how many Mike received, so that we can identify. And that's what we did last time. We had a consultant that reviewed and told us and gave us guidance exactly how to go about to seek a stop-loss, all different facets of the insurance program. And Mike, do we have any... Buddy?
Well, I think the key here is to convene your committee.
What is it due?
Mr. Villarreal.
They're due in January.
Well, Mr. Villarreal, but I think what I'm asking is...
Something else.
Is that it's for the committee to meet and address this issue. However you address it, tell us... Tell the Commissioners' Court, because I'm not gonna be here after the first of the year, but tell the Commissioners' Court, what is the problem, and if there's anything we could've done about it at the time that it came up. And if there isn't, then they need to know this.
Just give us a report.
Okay.
I wanna make one final comment. When I saw that agenda item Friday, I reviewed some insurance information that I was able to look at. And whatever we've done in the past five years, you know, whatever we've done as a county, in all the plans that I looked at and asked around on, no one has had a plan that costs less per employee than we have. Everybody's cost in the last four years, in one case, doubled to the employer. So, you know, I mean, I do need to say thank you for whatever you've done, because there's been a very significant hold on increased costs, you know? And I don't know who's to blame or who's to get credit for it, but that's something that I would like for you to also tell us when you bring us the report. Bring us the stop-loss issue, but look at the other things and give us a report as a commission.
And on this million something... We received that money, we were reimbursed most of that money through the stop-loss. Because we only pay... Out of the million dollars, we only pay $100,000. The other $900,000 were reimbursed to us from stop-loss. And this is the purpose for stop-loss.
Yeah, that was on the existing policy that we had.
So it served the purpose.
I will acknowledge that.
It's on the existing policy and the one that's now enforced. See, again, that's what kind of created the dilemma that...
The motion would be to...
Before we leave, I'd really like to ask our legal department to look into the authority that our county auditor has to sign this renewal for a year. I don't know where he comes up with that authority, but maybe it's there, and I'm not aware of it. So perhaps, Mr. Burst, if you could look into that and let us know what authority he has to sign.
Yes, sir.
If he doesn't have authority to sign, we've got other issues with it.
And bring it back next week. All right, motion to... To...
Acknowledge.
Direct the Insurance Committee to meet, to convene, and to address the issue of the increase in the stop-loss policy premium.
And report back to the court.
And report back to the Commissioners' Court after the first of the year. Motion by Commissioner Miles, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by a sit-down. All opposed, motion carries. Nineteen, Discussion and Action Regarding Certification of Additional Revenues and Direction Regarding Unbudgeted and Overbudgeted County Expenditures.
County Auditor's Office yesterday morning received a FedEx document from Evercom and Securus. Included in that was a check for $100,000 partial payment. I still, as county auditor, have concerns about the nature of these funds and the process in certifying new revenues. To somewhat diffuse this issue, I've sought the county attorneys and district attorneys' opinion on this issue and acquiesce on the direction that I should get from the county attorney.
Well, it's true, though, on more than one occasion, Mr. Auditor, that you have certified revenues based upon contractual terms that are out there, yes?
Yes.
Okay. This wouldn't be the first time, right?
Correct.
And you've never requested an opinion from the district attorney on this issue before, right?
Usually, the county auditor has initiated this issue.
Right. And as I understand, you brought some of these issues... Well, yeah, but you've never addressed it through the district attorney's office, right? Ever?
Not so far.
How long have you been the auditor?
I've been auditor over 13 years, sir.
And this has come up numerous occasions, right?
In most cases, it's the auditor that's initiating this issue.
And also, isn't it...
In all cases.
Yeah.
It's been the auditor initiating this issue.
Right, but you've paid... You have certified revenues from the county numerous times based upon contractual commitments that the county has entered into, yes or no? Yes?
For various and sundry different reasons. I could go into each and every one of them. But there may have been a contract associated with it, but based on my review of the revenue at the time, I did certify additional revenues in the past, primarily in areas where there has been an emergency or extreme necessity.
And there's other items on this agenda here that you are addressing, which is direction regarding unbudgeted and overbudgeted county expenditures, right? What do you want to talk about?
Are you prepared to? Last week, I brought jail department overtime increases. The issue is still out there. I'm looking for direction from the Commissioners' Court on this issue.
Last week, you came to the Commissioners' Court, and you said that we could go ahead and fund a $150,000 wall that the district judges want us to...
240.
200... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. $250,000 wall that the district courts wanted us to build around the courthouse, and you certified revenues... You said there were available extra revenues from interest that was being earned from both bond funds and from settlement funds that were out there. Why is it that before you certified that amount of money to be used on this wall, you didn't come to us and say, the sheriff's got some overtime issues that need to be addressed, and rather than spending the $250,000 on a wall around the parking lot for the district judges and the district attorney's office, we need to pay that overtime that he might have incurred, that he needs to incur based upon his needs in the department?
You can still do that, sir.
Okay, so we can... Can we then take part of that $250,000 since that you... That we... Can we go back and take part of that $250,000 and use it to pay all these increased costs that you were saying the sheriff has?
Judge, that's your prerogative.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the Commissioners' Court next week on that issue. Now, what other problems that you have on overbudgeted and unbudgeted county expenditures?
I'm looking for direction. Obviously, you've given us direction.
Which is the unbudgeted county expenditure? Is it the creation of the Department of Administration? Is that an unbudgeted?
That's your issue, sir.
No, that... You put it on the agenda, Mr. Auditor.
I didn't speak of the administrative department.
It says, this is your agenda item. Your agenda item says, "Discussion and Action Regarding Certification of Additional Revenues and Direction Regarding Unbudgeted and Overbudgeted County Expenditures." One issue you've brought to us is this whole issue with respect to the Sheriff Department overtime that you claim is not budgeted or overbudgeted.
I believe that I have iterated in my letter to the county attorney my concerns.
And what is that?
At this point in time, I don't want to elaborate any more beyond that.
Have you told us what it is? Wait a minute, Mr. Auditor. How can you walk away from the podium if you put this item on the agenda? I believe that you should answer to the Commissioners' Court this issue, because you have claimed that there is no money out there to pay for this department, yet you came to this Commissioners' Court last week, and you told us that there's an additional $250,000 available in interest money that we can use...
Actually, you said $500,000.
$500,000 in interest money that can be utilized to pay for this wall, yet you're not willing to tell us that we can use some of that money to pay for other things, because you're unwilling to certify a $200,000 bonus for an increase in a contract that the Commissioners' Court approved several months ago, that every single time, every single time that this issue has ever come up before you and before this Commissioners' Court, you've certified any revenues that were gonna come in from a contract that the county entered into, except this one time, and then you have to go to the district attorney's office in order to ask for an opinion from him on that? Come on. Get out, Chuck.
Morning, Judge. Honored Commissioners, I'm just here to verify that yesterday at about 4:30 in the afternoon, we got a request from the county auditor, Mr. Yates, to review issues regarding...
I'm sorry for interrupting, sir. We can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. Is that better? Yesterday at about 4:30 in the afternoon, the county auditor, Mr. Yates, came by our office and dropped off a request for an opinion regarding the certification of funds, generally dealing with, I believe, a tenetics account. As you... It was late in the afternoon. We haven't had an opportunity to review it and to come up with an opinion on that. Mr. Villalobos himself is out of town at this time. Will be happy to review it. We just need a little time to come back and give you an opinion, if that is what is requested, which it has been requested by the county auditor. But in order for me to expound anymore, I'm gonna have to research the issue. We can come back at another time, if you'd like that. But that's the situation that we find ourselves in, the office of the county and district attorney.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion to table, number nineteen? Since the auditor did not want to talk about it. Commissioner... Commissioner Miles makes a motion. There's a second to that motion, but Commissioner Gratz, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by a sit-down.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty, Consideration and Reappointment of Tom Hutchins as Cameron County Fire Marshal. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Commissioner... Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Benavides, yes?
Is... Mr. Tom, you are the fire marshal now?
Yes, sir, and according to the local government code chapter 352, every two years, it must be renewed by Commissioners' Court. That's the reason it's being put out.
So it's just a reappointment for this thing?
All those in favor, signify by a sit-down. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Twenty-one, Consideration and Adoption of Cameron County Fire Marshal Fees.
Commissioners, on this, I'm sorry, you got 13 copies, it's only one.
Second.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gratz, the second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by a sit-down. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Twenty-two, Consideration and Action to Reclassify Fund 100-460 at Fire Marshal Radio Communications, including equipment funding.
Judge and Commissioners, when the Department of Administrative Services was created, one of the departments that it moved under there was the Fire Marshal/Radio Communications. We'd just like to clarify that the budget that currently is identified as emergency management, which is 100-460, would be under the direction and control of the county fire marshal and the head of the radio services committee, communications committee.
Do I move to approve? Motion by Commissioner Wood, is there a second to the motion? The second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion?
Just a minute. So clarify the change there?
The Fund 100-460 in the budget is identified as emergency management. We're asking that it be reclassified to the fire marshals and radio communications budget that's under the direction of the county fire marshal.
So what happens to that fund that we're reclassifying?
It would be available for the fire marshal, and the equipment and stuff would be under the direction of the fire marshal. And that's why we... And a subsequent item we have, we're removing the equipment and funding that are tied to emergency management, which was one of the functions that Tom was filling under the judge's administration. We transferred back to the county judge's office so that it can be directed, be under the direction of the incoming county judge.
The official top department title of the county judge is Department of Emergency Management, and that's Department 10406. So it is a direct function of your current county judge. So diminishing that particular budget takes it out of the current county judge's budget and moves it to a separate line item, separate department.
And a subsequent item on the agenda moves a lot of this stuff back into the county judge's office?
Yes. One of the things that Tom was able to accomplish as the emergency management coordinator and the fire marshal was to find outside funding to fund positions, not only to oversee the operations of the radio communication system, which he brought in the funds to cover that, but also from the emergency service district to provide funding for the actual fire marshals to help supplement the salaries of the fire marshal, the two deputy fire marshals that we have in place. And so the funding that was identified for that was not tied directly to emergency management and his activities as the judge's coordinator. The emergency management coordinator is a direct appointment by the county judge, and will be up to... Well, actually, the county judge acts as the emergency manager coordinator, and he has the authority to appoint an assistant. It can be anybody. It can be anybody in the general public, it can be anybody in his staff, it can be a commissioner, it could be Tom, it could be the auditor. But what we're hoping to do is to ensure that Tom still has the direction and control over the equipment and funding that was... That he's brought into his department.
Which accommodates the needs of every community in the county.
The radio system currently serves every city, and some school districts, I think, are getting set to come on board, as well as the fire protection and law enforcement.
All right, does the motion...
I have a question, another... I haven't had a chance to... Mr. Burst, is there any legal problem with doing this move? Do we in any way, shape, or form, as a Commissioners' Court, diminish the ability of the incoming judge to do what he's supposed to do under that office by making this change?
Mr., I couldn't hear all of your questions.
But do we, by making this change and allocating the resources that are included in the memorandum that Remy sent us, do we in any way, shape, or form diminish the ability of the incoming county judge to do what is necessary under statute for this county if we approve this change?
That... You know, I would... To answer that broad question, I would have to have a little time to look at it. You have authority... Now, the part of the question that concerns me is, you say diminish statutory duties, and you cannot do that.
Well, let me put it real frankly to you. Could I be held criminally liable for reducing a potential county judge of not being able to provide services he is statutorily required to by law for the citizens of this county if I support this? Is that easier?
Yes, if what you're doing would reduce the ability of an elected official, in this case, the county judge, to perform a statutory required duty, then you cannot do it. Now, you can transfer funds from line item to line item, but you can't do it if it results in the inability of an elected official to do their statutory duty.
The... Actually, the two things are occurring is that we are transferring out all the equipment and all the funding that is tied to the activities of the emergency management component of that department to the county judge's office. So we're not diminishing his ability to respond or taking equipment that's tied to that function. The second thing is that he gets the authority under an executive order of the governor, not from statute. So you wouldn't be interfering with his constitutional due to important function of the office.
I have a question for Richard. Where you signed off, I know it can be either you have reviewed or approved the document.
I have.
So when you reviewed this, were you just... When you saw this document, were you just reviewing it, or were you approving it?
Well, both, I was approving it in the terms that you can... You can transfer funds unilaterally, and I reviewed it from that perspective. To the extent that there is concern that you're reducing the statutory required duties of one officer over another, I didn't review it from that perspective. That takes a broader review than I did, and I can do that, but I can't... I mean, I have to have time to do that. I didn't view it from a point of view of whether or not it was reducing a statutory required duty, which you cannot do.
When I took office 12 years ago, we had a contracted emergency management director that worked one day a week, if that much. In fact, I don't think I ever saw him in the first few months that I was here. He had a budget of hardly anything, and that's who was supposed to handle all emergency management for the county. The functions of the different... The different functions that Tom Hutchins has performed over the years
over the years have been in a whole myriad of areas that don't deal with emergency management because we took the role and we did it, including a Fire Marshal that wasn't there. There wasn't a Fire Marshal before, including putting to place enormous amount of resources to bring in a communication system for the different law enforcement agencies in Cameron County. It was not a function, it was not an activity that in any way involved emergency management at the time I took over. I mean, the fact that Tom Hutchins expanded his personal role in working for the county to include numerous areas that were not part of the normal function of emergency management does not mean that leaving him with him detracts from the responsibilities of the incoming Judge in the area of emergency management. If that's the case, then the Commissioners Court, of which Mr. Coscos was a member of, when I became County Judge, would have been criminally liable just as much, or 10 times or 100 times worse than what the suggestion is being made here. Give me a break. The things that he does are issues that are issues that he has filled a significant gap that are out there that don't necessarily have anything to do with emergency management. And so, and I, you know, I can give you all the examples where I have been involved with emergencies in Cameron County, with hurricanes, with the collapse of the causeway, and those issues didn't involve the functions that he's got today that are being left in the Department of Communications and Fire Marshal. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, and I support Tom Hutchins' role and what he's done 100 percent. I mean, in no way, shape, or form, I think he's needed in the Emergency Management Department of this county. That's my personal opinion. You know, I think that what he's done with communications, what he's done with getting the communities, all the cities, to come together and realize the importance of being able to get on their radios and communicate with all the different agencies and improve the quality of the equipment through the grants that we've gotten, I mean, in no way, shape, or form am I saying, you know, I mean, I don't want Tom Hutchins. I just think that Tom should probably stay in the realm of emergency management because that's where he can best serve this county, you know?
And I think that until December 31st, under the Judging Ojos's appointment, he'll continue to perform in that function, and then what the incoming County Judge does is complete his discretion.
Yeah, that decision to appoint Tom Hutchins, or you, or himself, or whomever, to the position of Emergency Management Director lies in the hands of the incoming County Judge. That's Judge Coscos's call at that time. Now, perhaps you'll see the same thing I see, David, like you see. Tom Hutchins has done a magnificent job. We, never before, he came to the county, he came while I was here, but I know before he came, it was nothing like it is today.
Oh, yes.
It is organized, it's well put together, we have plans. Every small community in the county now can apply for emergency management funding, they can apply for, Mr. Hutchins put together for them to be able to apply for, which is going to be.
And has received.
And has received, yes. And so, but that, again, is the incoming County Judge's decision on who he wants to be, the Emergency Management Director. That's so.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item 24, consideration and action regarding the designation.
Item number.
I'm sorry, 23, consideration and action regarding the transfer and reclassification of Slot 3 Administrative Assistant Fund, Department 100-4060, to the Deputy Director, Slot 03 Fund, Department 100-490, General Administration. Do I hear a motion on that?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion?
This is, can I get a little explanation on this?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. When the Commissioners Court created the Department of Administrative Services, there were three positions that were proposed in the organizational document, was the Director, the Deputy Director, and the Department Secretary. The item that we had following that was a way that we had hoped to establish the department with having a limited budget impact, which was to go to existing slots first and then find outside revenues for the secretarial position. When the court decided that it would rather in turn use the $100,000 that had come in from the contract, the TNNX contract, when they made the motion, they funded the two positions of the Director and the Secretary, they tabled the item that would have sent the reclassification of the Assistant, Administrative Assistant out of the Emergency Management Department and the location, the office locations. And so now we're coming back to the Commissioners Court to see if we can have that accomplished, which is transferring that position into the Administrative Services Department so we have a budget-neutral event.
And you don't think that the incoming person would need that slot?
Well, the slot was created when the Commissioners Court accepted the contract with the Emergency, I'm sorry, the Emergency Communications 911 Board, which was to oversee the implementation of the radio system. Part of it was being funded by the general fund, and part of it was being funded out of that. The funds aren't tied directly to a specific slot or individuals. It was that they were providing a certain amount of money.
They were tied to the emergency management.
The radio communications, that function. And so now that that may not fall within the department, the emergency management functions, I think Tom has indicated that he is comfortable with his current staffing level to oversee that operation and is okay with transferring out the slot to the Administrative Services Department.
So actually, to summarize this, you're creating a position?
We're reclassifying a position that was going to serve the Administrative Services Department. It was part of the original.
Well, that's creating a position in your department?
Yes. It's creating, it's funding and providing the slot for a position that was created in the formation of the department but didn't have a slot or funding for, and it's eliminating it in the Emergency Management.
That slot is already in the Department of Administration.
It is already under the Department of Administrative Services. So I'm moving a slot within the department to accomplish the overall goal of the department. Request.
Okay. And you've determined in this short period of time, and you've done an assessment of what your duties are going to be, so that you're going to be requiring an assistant?
Well, I think it's.
It's a two-pronged approach here, you know? That being one thing, you know, that you've already determined that you need an assistant. Secondly, by taking that position away from emergency management where it was, it's telling me that we've been overstaffed in that, since we've had that position?
Not necessarily.
But we don't need it anymore?
Well, the Department of what is now known as the Fire Marshal/Emergency Communications Department, the Radio Communications Department, wouldn't necessarily need that slot in there any longer because some of the duties that Jared filled, who's the individual that's being reclassified, was the rewriting of all the emergency management plans, was working on the contracts for the debris management and post-hurricane contracts, pre-position The Department, as it was originally proposed, considered the three slots. There is over $7 million of budget that this department is now overseeing. There are over 80 employees that are being overseen. There are 26 individual facilities that will be overseen. And while I imagine that I am pretty capable, I would think that in some point in the process, I would need assistance in working with these six departments that have been placed under the Administrative Services Department.
Okay.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Twenty-five, consideration and action, I'm sorry, 24, consideration and action regarding the designation of office numbers 251 and 252 in the Cameron County Courthouse building for the Administrative Services Department, and office number B45, and adjoining offices for the Administrative Services Radio Communications, and office number B03, and adjoining offices for Administrative Services Fire Marshal. Do I hear a motion on that?
I'm not prepared.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion?
Is there an office that's going to be available for the new incoming Emergency Services Director? If there is one, if it's not Tom?
In the County Judge's office, there are sufficient number of locations for the existing staff on the county's budget and any increasing in staff that he would need. It was laid out to include growth in the department.
All right. All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Nay.
Twenty-five, consideration and action regarding the transfer of necessary equipment and funding from the Fire Marshal Radio Communications County Judge's office and from County Judge's office to Administrative Services and approval of budget amendments?
Judges and Commissioners, lists were prepared that indicated which equipment would be transferring to the department. It's attached to the item number 22 backup. We'd asked that the court approve the lists as they were presented. They were prepared by the Emergency Management Department.
Right.
Would it not be more appropriate to just get new equipment, if you need new equipment?
I'm sorry.
Would it not be more appropriate to just get whatever you need new?
On the, we're recommending that the, we're taking, we're asking to be transferred out of the Judge's office, the one laptop and the Explorer that internally, that I utilize, that I was utilizing as the Assistant County Administrator.
I believe there's a relatively new truck on order that would serve the.
One of the vehicles that's being requested, there's a trailer that contains some of the decontamination equipment that Emergency Management would be responsible for relocating. Unfortunately, none of the vehicles that we have in the department or, I think, available to do that are available, so we would be adding that oversized vehicle, I think, three-quarter ton pickup to haul that trailer, and that vehicle we'd recommend that the incoming Emergency Management Coordinator utilize.
Commissioners, I have an issue with regards to this, and your computer, Department Director, is probably not at liberty to address it, but there is information on this equipment, these laptops and these computers that belong to the Office of Emergency Management, currently fall within the County Judge's office. That information should be extracted, preserved, and provided to the new Emergency Management Director. So what I'm requesting that the court add into their motion is that all the information on these units be backed up and be available to the incoming County Judge.
Judge, I should point out that one of the things that we did right after the election and after my meeting with Ms. Zamora, who apparently is going to be working with the incoming County Judge, was I prepared a memo asking that all the files and information be preserved that are necessary for the ongoing projects, and I'm assuming that that's going to be occurring, and when the, when the equipment is transferred over, the information that is on it that pertains to those functions will be intact and passed on either through a CD disc, a DVD disc, or whatever method that Rudy recommends.
All right. Is there a motion? Is there a motion on this?
There was, yes.
Huh?
I made a motion.
Did you did? You already did? Motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Twenty-six, consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And approval to purchase Cavets from HMOQ as sole source supplier.
Good morning, Judge.
Do I hear a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
There might be a request to table, and I'm not sure.
Commissioner Wood has asked me to, good morning, my name is Latif Montel on the WIC Program Director. Ms. Halinas is out this week, but Commissioner Wood has asked me to table this item because he wants us to research a little bit more and for a different, and local vendor, probably.
Motion to table.
And do you agree with that?
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Garcia.
And you're okay with that?
Well, we've always used HMOQ, but they are a sole source provider in that item that we use, but Commissioner Wood prefers that we look for a different method.
Well, I know that last year, this was questioned last year when it came up to us, and we were told that that was a sole source provider and that we didn't have a choice.
And there is an attached sole source provider letter with the agenda, but he's hoping that we look for a different method, maybe test trips or something else.
There are products that you use to accommodate the same thing and the same needs that are less expensive than this.
I, like I said yesterday when I spoke to Commissioner Woods, I, we've used this process for the last about 10 years, and that's how we've used, and they are a national source, sole source for the WIC program.
Well, let's look at the, what options are out. I mean, you know.
Okay. And that's what we'll do, so we'll just table till next time.
I would, I don't have a problem looking at it.
Withdraw, you withdraw your motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Motion to table by Commissioner Wood. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion to table? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Matter is tabled. Seven, 27, consideration, authorization, transfer, lab salaries in the amount of $2,500 from Fund 10-425, Slot 3, to extra help fund, number 10-425. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Wood. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty-eight, consideration and approval of change order number two for the San Manito-Levi Annex Building Renovation Project. Do I hear a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
By Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty-nine, consideration and authorization for a 50-day contract extension for the Aurora City Fire Station and Family Learning Center due to permanent issues and rain delays. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Wood. Is there a second by Commissioner Garcia? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a sit and aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thirty, consideration and action regarding Cameron County's participation with Ocean Trust Bahia Grande Restoration Project. Sorry to keep you waiting so long, Thor.
No problem.
Thank you.
A lot of serious business going on.
Yeah, this is very serious, too.
We stay busy.
This is a good one.
We stay busy.
Over here.
My name is Thor Lassen. I'm with Ocean Trust. We're a nonprofit foundation, a national nonprofit foundation. I want to say that Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, is the only region where we have a state chapter, and it's really in response to the overwhelming support and participation that we've had from this community. We've been here, we're working on Bahia Grande since 2000, and so I'm here today on behalf of the many partners involved in the Bahia Grande Restoration Project. You all are familiar with this project. I know because you all have already made some commitments to this, to this effort. First, I want to recognize the support that we've received from Cameron County in particular, and I'm sorry the judge stepped away, the leadership from Judge Hinojosa, and also from Commissioner Garza, District 3, and I've also had the pleasure of meeting some of the other Commissioners recently, Commissioner Benavides, so I've enjoyed accompanying you on a side trip. Extend an opportunity to the remaining Commissioners at any point to visit what's going on at Bahia Grande. Also want to recognize the support that we've gotten from the Sheriff's Department. We've had the Sheriff's Department prisoners out there, volunteer inmates out there, helping on this project. It's a very public project. In some of the photos there, you'll see the prisoners, we do cook for them every day in appreciation of their time, and we've also had support from District Number 3, the trucks has been very helpful on this project. One thing that, for the, for the members of the audience that may not, you may not be aware, but this project really started from a lot of different directions, and I know from Cameron County, it was to deal with the problems from dust originating from Bahia Grande, and through the leadership of Judge Hinojosa and Commissioner Garza and establishing the Dust Control Committee. That committee now has actually grown into a Bahia Grande Restoration Committee. This effort now has attracted 60-some partners that extend nationally. You all, I know the Commissioners are familiar, or the audience may not be familiar with the fact that this project itself has received national recognition. It is one of the largest restoration projects in the United States, and last year, or actually earlier this year, we received, and I say we, because everyone received this honor from the Secretary of the Interior with this Cooperative Conservation Award. That's a top conservation award given by the Department of Interior, and what you may not be aware of yet is we're yet, we're going to be receiving another award from Coastal America program. It's tied to EPA. So it continues to get national recognition, and I think that Cameron County deserves a lot of credit for the work that's being done in this area. Just last week, I was in New Orleans giving a presentation on Bahia Grande at the Restore Americas Estuary Conference, so it's, for this county, you generate a lot of national recognition in terms of turning what has been a problem into a thriving estuary. This is a long-term project. We are getting closer to the end, at least, of the construction part. There are at least four different channels being built. The one is, one is being built by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. We call it Channel F, that will bring fresh water into Laguna Larga. What we're focusing on right at the moment is the construction of the interior channels that will make. channels that will make the connections between Bahia Grande, Laguna Larga, and La Laguna Madre. This is still important, even though Cameron County was able to establish a pilot channel in 2005 and bring some water back into the Bahia Grande Basin. There's no water really up in, in La Laguna Madre and Laguna Larga. Still, if you go by there, you'll, don't be surprised to see dust still blowing out on the school up in Port Isabel and that, and that, and those townships. So, it's important work. I have some more recent photographs on Page 6 that show the extent of what we are still involved when, in. The interior channels are being funded, and our role as a nonprofit has been to bring some federal dollars to the community. We have gotten an outpouring of support from this community in terms of matching contributions from private individuals, from the power company, from the local municipalities, to match the federal dollars that come, which is a requirement. We are here today requesting $10,000 so that we can put toward the matching of this, of our current work in, in the interior channel. We have additional work that will happen over the next couple of years, Channel, the Vida Ancha, and of course, the expansion of the main channel. We had a very good relationship with Cameron County and have helped and worked with its Department of Recreation, Joe Vega in particular, in, in trying to bring in the additional money. So, I'm here today really to give you a report on what's been going on and to present our current state of affairs, if the county is, is interested in, in participating. At least, I know you've already made a commitment to the, to the Vida Ancha and to the main channel. If, if, if it's possible to support what we're doing in the interior channels, we would welcome that. We're flexible, and we will work with you any way that we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thor.
I think we should. I think that's part of the whole picture that needs to be addressed, and I think that you can't, the, the channel widening can't achieve what we're trying to achieve by itself. You need to connect up all these bahias, and so, and everybody needs to participate in it, and we, we started this project, and so, we need to be continuing to support it. So, I would, you know, I would request that we, that we go ahead and fund it.
Pending funding of funding source?
Pending funding source.
When do you need the money, Thor?
I'm very flexible, you know? Whenever, whenever it suits the county.
As long as you get it, huh?
It, it does help us in the budgeting process, obviously.
Okay, well, we're going to fund it, and then these guys can figure out where to get the money from.
That'd be fine, because we, we're flexible. We do have, we do have some cash. It's just a matter of, we want to make a commitment, we've made a commitment to put any savings that we have from this interior work into Vida Ancha, and so, that, the money will continue on into the, each phase of this project. So, if we can have it this year, next year, doesn't matter to us.
Well, I move that we approve it pending finding the funding source, and I do wish to make a comment in regards to this whole project and in regards to Gilbert Hinahosa and this project. From day one, Judge, and I really appreciate what you've done for this project, you have been at almost every meeting. You kind of got us all from talking about it to doing something about it, and, and I publicly thank you for that, because it's, it's a big issue for Precinct 3 in that part of the county. You know, you, you kind of directed the meetings, you directed the folks that attended the meetings, and you kind of pressured all of us into moving and doing something. So, I publicly wish to thank you for this project in a very special way for that area. Thank you.
And I'll second that motion and those comments.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by a state of an eye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Thor.
Thank you.
That's a neat name, Thor, you know? Where did it come from?
Norway.
Okay.
The Vikings came down here, apparently, I don't know.
I thought it was-
But they told me that.
I thought it was Star Trek.
No.
There was a Thor in Star Trek.
Roman gods.
It's the way I used to say sore in my more difficult days of a lisp.
Now you-
Okay. 31. Consideration and adoption resolution naming Laguna Heights Community Park by Harano McFarlane Park. The resolution was passed by the Laguna, I'm sorry, the Port Isabel City Commission, asking that we name it after the two Vietnam veterans from the Laguna Madre that were killed in Viet, in Vietnam. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by a state of an eye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 32. Consideration, possible action regarding county judge's request to use Dancy Building, the Commision Courtroom and Dancy Building for the January swearing-in ceremony. Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Just one, one moment, please. I'd like to revise that. That wasn't the initial agenda item that I had sent over. We are not using the parking lot. We're only going to be utilizing the courtroom.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by a state of an eye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent items, 33 through 69, travel item number 17.
Judge, Commissioners, I need for you to table item number 43, please.
Item what?
43.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items and travel items?
45 had already been done.
Sorry. I have a correction on item 55.[1739.58]